I'm going to call our April 5 budget workshop to order. Thank you. All right, City Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, please calling the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yep.
Vincent?
Yep.
Gibson?
Here.
Parity Canzaro?
Excused.
Micho?
Here.
Witham?
Here.
Goodwin? Cameron?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
All right, our Counselor Witham will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Right, so, just to kind of, I'll take like a minute or two to lay the groundwork, if you will, for what today will look like. We're going to start off, like we always do, with the community support section of our budget. So for councilors who have their budgets with them, and for those who may be following along with theirs either at home or here, that will kind of lead us off to page C7. So if you all want to turn to page C7.
Page me.
All right, that is our page we'll be working from. I want to make a note, too, that a lot of these pages have compendium pages. So it's not only just C7, but also C8. C8 shows the proposed request amounts, as well as the amounts that are requested by the organizations that we'll hear from today who are seeking community support. So honestly, C8 is probably the preferred page for folks who are following along. That's what I'll be using, but both are related and, again, work together to kind of show councilors the budget amounts. So, working in order on this page, I'll work my way down from the first request down to our new requests, and then after new requests, we will open it up to any additional requests that are not listed here. So just keep that in mind. And again, anyone who is here in, you know, support or working with the organizations who are requesting funds from the city, invite you, please, to come up when you're called to the podium right in front. Make sure the mic is on with the little green light, and we'll open the floor to you to kind of inform us on your requests, your organization, tell us any information that council may have, and I'll then open it up to councilors for any questions that they may have. Hopefully, councilors have the packet of information that goes along with this. Just as a reminder, any community organization that did request funds was also asked to kind of submit a bit of information, and so hopefully, councilors have those and have read through those and are prepared with questions if they have them. Just want to make sure that's clear to folks. Yes, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, we have 16 or more nonprofits in front of us. Is there going to be a time limit?
I am not planning to impose a time limit because I want organizations to feel like they have the time to share what information they need.
But they could just be cognizant of the time.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, just because there are so many, certainly try to keep it within maybe five minutes, we'll say.
Thank you.
But again, I'm not going to be super, super strict on that. Other questions from folks? So, without further ado, our first on our list is the Coast Bus Service. Is there someone from Coast Bus? Thank you so much. And again, just another housekeeping, just make sure you state your name, please, just for the record.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rad Nichols. I'm the Executive Director of Coast. I will be brief. My, our organization had an amazing year last year here in Somersworth. Ridership on the routes that we operate here in the city, Route 1, Route 12, Route 100, all saw a combined increase in ridership of almost 29%, unprecedented. On our ADA services, we saw an increase of almost 8%. We are well above where we were back in 2019 in terms of ADA rides provided in the city, and we're about 92% of where we were on the fixed route system to where we were in fiscal year 19 here in the city. We connect people and communities and connect those people to opportunities, and that's what we do, and we do, I think, very well at Coast. And I will be brief.
Thank you, appreciate it. Are there questions from City Council? Yes, Counselor Witham.
Rad, thanks for being here this morning. Could you just explain the ADA ridership? I know what it is, but I think it's helpful for the community to hear because it's an important aspect of what you do.
Thank you. So our ADA ridership, that is services that are curb-to-curb based, can be up to door-to-door for individuals who qualify for that level of service based on their inability to use the fixed route bus system because of a disability. So whether that be a physical disability or a cognitive disability, they can't navigate the fixed route system, so we provide a higher level of service up to door-to-door for those individuals to get to whatever, whatever they need to access. It's not limited, it's not a non-emergency medical transportation service, it's for any trip purpose, and we will serve all origins and destinations within three-quarters of a mile of our fixed route bus system, so quite a broad area of service.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks a lot, Brad, for coming out this morning. It's always good to see you. I've been seeing you, I think, for almost eight years now. It's pretty good.
Thank you.
So my question is, besides the cities, what other funding is there that goes towards, with Coast Bus? Can you just touch on that a little bit?
Right, so the bulk of funding coming into Coast comes from the federal government, although that is a declining percentage of our overall budget. It used to be about 60%, now it's getting closer to 50%. We're about 51%, 52% right now. The cities are our second-largest funding source. The state is currently, this year, our third-largest funding source. We are, we are hopeful that the vote that the House Finance Committee took this week, which includes funding about level of where we are this year in the state budget, we're hoping that that'll clear the whole House and go to, switch over in the Senate. Then we have transit advertising, so that's the ads that you see in the bus shelters and on the buses. We have agreements, partnership agreements for services that we provide under contract, like Portsmouth Senior Transportation, some other variety of other services, and then we have, there's a whole host of other revenue sources, but...
Thank you. Other questions from councilors? Yes, Counselor Parity Canzaro.
Thanks, hi, Rad.
Morning.
Can you talk a little bit about the services in addition to the regular services that you provide? So I know that as a city that provides funding and is a host city for these services, we also have you do the, like, the Somersworth Children's Day. And then, and another question is about adding stops. Like, sometimes we get contacted by people that want to add stops, and we have to kind of explain, you know, how much extra funding that is and how we're, you know, we're really trying to keep the funding that we have already.
Right, so we do, we do, for every community we operate in, we have, we offer one event a year that we will cover as part of your, as part of our relationship. And in Somersworth, that's traditionally been the Children's Festival, and we provide a shuttle on that day for free. And so it's just a really nice way for us to get back to the community. We have multiple services that we do provide under contract. Again, like Portsmouth Senior Transportation, they tend to be agreements where we can make a little bit of profit, which helps lessen the burden on communities. We, there's, there's, Community Rides is another service like that. We provide some contract services for a voluntary driver program in the area where we provide their accessible trips, things like that. Lost track of the other question.
Yeah, adding stops, and then, also, if you could just mention the fares, like, why can't you just increase fares?
So adding stops, if it's along the current route, can be, can be fairly simple. If it's on a state road like 108, it can be more complex because the DOT gets involved. If it is off-route, tends to be more complex depending on how we can get back en route and how much time that off-road diversion takes. We, the system runs on an hour headway, so, for example, Route 1 starts at the Dover Transportation Center in downtown, comes through Somersworth, Berwick, and then goes back. We need to do that in about 54 minutes. We have a little bit of slush time there so that we can maintain everything on schedule, get back on schedule, but we can't, we can't put 65 minutes in a 60-minute hour, so that's a, that's a challenge. And then I forgot the other thing again, sorry.
Just fares, like, I hear people say sometimes, like, you know, can't you just increase your fares to cover the cost?
Right, so it's $1.50 to ride, the base fare. We do one free transfer per trip, and oftentimes, people are taking two or even three buses on their, on their trip. So that is relatively new, within the last couple of years, that we're doing the free transfer. If you're an older adult or you're disabled, it's half price on that $1.50 fare. We have, we have a fare that we consider is fair, and it's, and it's reasonable for most people to be able to make the trips that they need to make. You know, a few years back, I remember being here and listening to one of your residents talk about her and her adult children who were disabled needing to go to Walmart and back, and how much that cost for her, and, you know, those are the sorts of things that we have to remember for the people that are using our system. A dollar fifty can be, can be a burden when you're considering round trip or if other folks are traveling with them. We are going to look this year at potentially upping our fares in coordination with bringing in so, an electronic fare payment option, which will allow us to possibly increase the fare, but also limit the amount of fares you might pay over a period of time so that you would never pay more than what somebody having a monthly pass would pay, which is at a discounted rate. So there's some movement there.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Witham and Counselor Vincent?
The ask this year is 42,000, approximately more than last year. And I know last year during our budget process, we did not meet the ask, but then there was a request that came in from you somewhere throughout the year, and we allocated the remaining funds through our municipal transportation fee, which is an assessment on motor vehicle registrations here in the city. The $42,000 additional above what we provided in full last year, is that driven by increased cost, or is it driven by lack of other funding sources to piggyback on Counselor Vincent, or is it a combination of both?
So it's a, it's a combination of increased cost and how our funding formula works. And as ridership has continued to increase in the city at rates that are faster than other parts of the system, and as other parts of the system have had more service suspensions as the formula looks backwards for that component, then the city's portion of the overall need has bumped up. I was, as I put all the inputs into the formula and I saw what, saw what spit out, I said, can Somersworth please get a break? But that's what the inputs resulted in, unfortunately.
Follow-up, if I may?
You're right.
Thanks, and I appreciate that answer, and, again, it's a service that, I guess everybody recognizes, I recognize the need for those that need it here in Somersworth. It's critically important, but I get frustrated that the cost burden continues to be borne by our taxpayers, particularly when I start thinking about what could happen with federal funding sources and state funding sources. So I'm just worried about this number being even larger when you come and stand before council next year, so.
We...
It's 8:50 in the morning, I'm already getting angry, and I don't get angry easy, and it's not at you.
Yeah, no, we did, as the Transit Association, statewide Transit Association, I'm the chair, we asked for, so, so level funding at the state would be $3.4 million going into the next biennium. We asked for $6.8 million. I think we will be very lucky to get level funding, and that's where we are currently on the federal side. I'll be honest and say I'm waiting for the other shoe to fall.
You and me both.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent, you're in.
Thank you, Your Honor. So do you have a formula for, if you did have a fare increase, what a dollar does to bring in more revenue?
There, there are formulas that have historically been used. The challenge is, they, they are not accurate predictors of, of what will happen to demand these days. We have been surveying other public transit systems across the country who have been implementing fare increases.
Right.
And, and seeing what their, what those, what those impacts were to their revenues as well as their ridership. The model that we've traditionally used tells us that we will actually lose money if we implement a fare increase because it'll drive down demand, but we, we know that's shifting, so we're waiting to see how those other systems' demand plays out before we, before we really move ahead.
And a follow-up?
Absolutely.
And how many people actually ride Coast Bus in Somersworth yearly? Do you have that number?
It's about 44,000, well, 44,000 trips. We do not have an individual head count. That's just not how public transit works.
So when you, if you switch to the electronic, then you'll have a better head count, correct? That'll keep a number on?
We would, we would potentially, yes. We will always have a cash option, though, so for those people using cash, we still, we still won't be able to have a specific head count.
Thank you.
Counselor Peppin, and then Counselor Goodwin.
Rad, could you tell us, tell us how many, what size of the fleet that you have? How many vehicles roughly that you have, and how many drivers and stuff it takes to operate your?
I want to say our fleet right now, the revenue fleet, so those are vehicles that are used to transport, transport individuals, is 32 or 33 vehicles. About 14 are the large city transit buses you, you know or recognize, and then we have a fleet of smaller minibuses and minivans that, some of those are used on fixed route services, but most are used for our ADA paratransit services and other demand response services. The staff is almost 70 now. We are considered fully staffed at the moment. Give it time, we'll be back to understaffed. I think we have five people out right now on long-term disability, which is always a challenge for us as we have an older workforce. I think we lost two people unexpectedly this week to health issues. So, but, but we're, we're in a much, much better position than we've been for, I don't know, the last five or seven years that way.
Counselor Goodwin?
Good morning. I just wanted to circle back on the formula, the funding formula. You had said that one of the factors contributing to the 24% increase this year was service interruptions on other routes. So, does that mean, let's say that there's a route in Dover that was, what would cause an interruption, or some of the causes of interruptions? So what I think I'm hearing is because there's an interruption to a different service, more of the network's rides, a higher proportion of the network's rides and operational miles are now in Somersworth, so we are, we, the formula indicates that we need to pay more. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we do that over a three-year average so that it, there's, there's less peaks and valleys, it eases it out a little bit, but, yes, that's correct.
Sure, and what sort of thing contributes to service interruptions?
For the, for the last five years, those, those service interruptions have almost exclusively been as a result of understaffing.
Okay, so your, your ability to have drivers?
Right, right.
Okay, and then, so you guys, as an organization, have the capacity, based on, obviously, what staffing you have, to prioritize which lines remain operational and which don't? So you sacrifice services in other areas essentially over ours in the last five years, or the last three years at least?
Right, we try to, we try to have those fall on routes that are, have lower demand than, for example, the routes operating in the city. The routes operating in the city make up about 38% of our overall ridership on the system.
And how many, how many routes do you guys have in total?
That's a great question that I don't keep track of. Maybe between 12 and 15. Sorry.
No, that's all right, I'm just, we have, what, four routes in the city, so?
So you have three routes in the city and then the ADA paratransit service.
Thank you.
Other councilors? Great, seeing no other questions, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And congrats, Bob, on your last budget.
Oh, I should have made you do the pledge today. One more housekeeping note, I realize I forgot to mention, is that we won't be making decisions today, just so folks know, we're just here to listen and ask questions and absorb. So feel free, after your turn, to leave, you have no need to stay if you don't want to, but if you're interested to hear about everybody else, you're more than welcome to stay, so I just want to make that clear. All right, brings us to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Thank you so much. Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your own.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Jan Williams. I'm the Administrative Manager for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of New Hampshire. We currently have 17 matches we're serving right here in Somersworth. We have eight children right here in Somersworth on our waiting list, waiting for a mentor. We have several programs, as you can see, it was outlined pretty well in the information that you received, which, what our programs are. We've currently got 275 matches throughout the state. Obviously, our goal is always to serve more children, make more matches, the need is great. Children that are, that are experiencing ACEs, what's called ACEs, are adverse childhood experiences. We have a few, few staff that serve on different, in different communities on ACERT teams, which is ACEs Response Team, and we're finding that we're getting more and more referrals from those ACERT teams because we have more and more kids that are experiencing bad, bad experiences, so. We've received funding every year, just about, from the, from the city, and we greatly appreciate that. Our costs, obviously, like everyone else, have gone up, our funding has gone down. We had a great, a grant from the Department of Education, the State Department of Education. They lost their federal, federal funding, so consequently, we lost that funding, but we, we keep going, we keep striving, we survived COVID, and we just, we keep going and growing. We currently have 28 staff throughout the state. Mostly, we work remotely, but we do have a lot of in-person events. We have activities that we provide, cost-free, there's never any cost for our program to families or children, and I'm very proud to say where I work, so.
All right, questions from councilors? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much for being here, taking my question. Can you give me a quick overview on how this all works? Somebody calls you on the phone and says, we need somebody to have a big brother or a big sister. Can you just give me, like, how that, how that works?
Sure. Most of our referrals actually come from parents who realize that their children are in need of that extra person in their life. A lot of the kids we have are, are boys, in need of a good role model. So what happens is the parents will refer the children. Volunteers, which we're always recruiting for volunteers, come into the system, they get, they fill out some paperwork, the children, the parents fill out the paperwork. They're then given an interview with one of our enrollment staff, which is pretty in-depth, and the same happens on the volunteer end. We, we do extensive background checks, criminal driving, social media, all that sort of thing. Then our enrollment team, who are very good matchmakers, match children up with a mentor that fits, that they think will fit with them. We don't match on a one, we match on a one-to-one basis, but not first come, first served. So some children wait for quite a while so that we find just the right match, but they'll all tell you that it was worth the wait because we provide, we have a lot of great matches and very long-term matches. So that's how it works. They, we have, based on what program they're in, the most popular is the community-based program, where the matches meet up based on their preferences, what they like to do, and how much time they want to spend together. They, they do that between themselves and the parents, and they go out and, and just, you know, go for a walk, go to a game, get a pizza, you know, whatever they like to do. And like I said, we do provide activities that are cost-free or reduced price. We also have a list of businesses that give us discounts for matches if they show their match cards, so.
That's nice, sounds like a great program. If I could want one follow-up. So where does the, where does the money part come in? Because I think that once they get placed, and correct me if I'm wrong, they actually, like, if I, if someone got placed with me, then the expense would be from, I guess, myself to, you know, you take on somebody, you know? You're probably going to go out and do something fun and use a little bit of money, but where does the money part come in?
The money part comes in for staff. We, it, we have to have staff to do the interviews, do the background checks, evaluate the matches. We provide support and part of our, our, what we have to do, because we're affiliated with National Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America, is to support those matches. Safety is our number-one concern for kids, so for the first month of their match, they have to check in with a match support, a match advisor every week, and they, they talk with the parent, the child, and the big. And they, they talk with the parent, the child, and the big. And then, after the first month, I think then it's every two weeks for a period of time. But we, we support matches all through the life of that match. So, that takes, it takes staff. It takes staff to recruit, takes staff to secure funds, all of those things.
Thank you so very much for answering my questions. And I've heard nothing, I've only heard good about the program, so thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate that.
Other questions? Counselor Barry?
I'm just curious a little bit about, you said that there's eight children currently waiting for matches. Can you kind of explain like what you're missing in BIGs that you just don't have? I'm going to put a little plug out there for you, so hopefully, someone listening might hear that and get interested. I'm just curious.
Men. We're waiting for men to sign up, mostly.
All the men in the room. Listen.
Seventy, 75% of the kids that are on our waiting list are boys.
Okay.
Because, just because we don't have enough men that, that want to sign up. We're, we're doing better in that area now because we're, we're trying to put a lot more resources toward recruiting and getting the word out there. Some people don't even know that we're here. And, you know, as little as four hours a month makes a huge difference for a kid.
And is it like a common interest, like for those?
Yes.
Because I know you said that you just don't put them with anybody. They have to have like a common interest and such.
Right, yes. Yep. And we, you know, some of our BIGs don't want to deal. You get matched with a child that is, you know, has emotional diagnoses or, or anything like that. But we do have some that are, are great about that. But it's, it's mostly based on making a good match for a long lifetime friendship. So, that's, it's kind of like, you know, I keep asking our enrollment staff to make a match for me because they're such great matchmakers. So, it, it's just based on what they like to do. So, if you have a kid that really likes sports, we try to match with a, you know, a big that, that likes sports. It just depends on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from counselors? Counselor Perry Catanzaro?
Thank you. You mentioned that the State Department of Education lost federal funding, and so you lost that funding from the state. How much money was that and what?
It was, I believe, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I believe it was a three-year contract for about $300,000.
And how much roughly of a percentage? Is that like half your funding, a quarter?
Uh, no. It was maybe, maybe our budget last year was a little over $2 million. So, on an annual, you know, if you take that over the three years, it wasn't a huge amount, but it was enough, you know, that we did, did take a little hit on that, so. I mean, everybody knows funding goes down every year, and it's probably going to get worse before it gets better.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Other questions from counselors? Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right. Next up is Community Food Pantry. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. And again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Vaschan, and I'm the Executive Director of the Community Food Pantry. Thank you for inviting me. As you can imagine, the Community Food Pantry is getting very busy, and I worry that we're going to get even more busy. We get a lot of our food under the USDA program, and that food is free. And I've just been notified by Maine that, starting in May, 50% of that food is going away. So, that's a big hit for us because we use a lot of USDA food. I do as much as I can to get as much food for free as I can. We get food under the Resource Refresh Program from the three Hannafords in the area, the two in Dover and one in North Berwick. And also, we get food from Shaw's six days a week. Those foods include a lot of things: meats, vegetables, produce, some canned goods, bakery goods, sometimes milk, different things, depending on what the store either hasn't sold or what's approaching the sell date. So, those things all help us. And then, in addition, we belong to the Good Shepherd Food Bank, and we purchase a lot of food there. But they're having trouble buying food because a lot of their federal funding has dropped too. So, when you go on the website to purchase the food, it's not there. So, it's really been a challenge, and our numbers keep going up. And I, like I said, I think they're just going to continue to grow. I've given you quite a report so you can see what's going on. We did have some help last year. We were able to invite it to be partners with the casino in Dover, which I was a little bit leery of because I wasn't really sure about it. But it really turned out to be a good thing, and that's helped us out. It's given us a lot of monies that we can go buy food with. But we need everything we can get, and like I said, I'm concerned the numbers are going to go up. I've already had several clients whose food pan, whose food stamps under the SNAP program have decreased, and some who've lost their Medicaid. So, it's an interesting challenge, but we're doing our best to keep food on the shelves and take care of everybody who comes to the door.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Questions from counselors? Yes, Counselor Vincent?
Thanks again. And thank you very much. Since I've been here, you've been an icon coming in front of the city, and you do great work. Thank you very much. My company's donated money to your, to your organization, so it's definitely very good. Nobody wants to go hungry, for sure. How many people do you actually serve and help in a city? And I know you've given these numbers to us, but just to kind of put it out there right now this morning?
About 50% or more of the people we serve come from the city of Somersworth.
Right.
It depends on a given month, you know? And a lot of things depend on who comes. If people get their tax rebate, our numbers go down a little bit. If the weather is bad, our numbers go down a little bit. But on a basic month out of 500, usually around 500 visits, about 250 to 275 come from Somersworth.
That's a lot. And thank you again. And a follow-up. So, real quick, not too much detail, but what's the criteria? What do I have to, is it based on your income? What is the criteria to get some assistance of food?
Well, because we get USDA food, we have to use the USDA criteria. So, everybody who comes to the Food Pantry is asked to complete a very simple application. We ask for their name, their address, their phone number, their email, and how many people live in the house. And then, we ask them, "Do you get any kind of assistance, like food stamps or fuel assistance or Medicaid? Or are you disabled and you're under the SSDI program?" If they get any one of those things on the back of the form, there's several of them, they're automatically eligible to use the Food Pantry. In addition, there are income guidelines. Now, the problem with the income guidelines is that you would have to have their tax report, their tax review statement in order to know if they comply. But the, the income guidelines are pretty high. Like, a single person can make up to $40,000 and still be eligible to use the Food Pantry in the state of Maine and about $36,000 in the state of New Hampshire. So, I mean, we, we don't actually do the income because everybody that works for the Food Pantry is a volunteer, and we just don't have the staff to go through people's tax returns to see if they meet that guideline. But I would say at least 80% of the people coming to the Food Pantry are in one of those categories on that form. They're get, they're getting one of those things.
Thank you. And one more. Thank you, Your Honor. So, when I've donated in the past, it seems like I went through St. Ignatius. Are you connected with the churches?
We do receive food from all the area churches. What they do is they have a basket in the back of the churches, and they have a little sign to donate to the Food Pantry. And then, we have volunteers who pick up from the churches. So, we get, we get a lot of food from St. Ignatius. That's a good-sized parish. And Father Andrew is really a pretty great guy.
Great guy.
I get to just tell you a really quick funny story. A little while ago, like a couple of years ago, I had an appreciation dinner for the volunteers, and he was there, and he was going to go home. He had marriage counseling, and he was going to have his people make apple pie or apple, some kind of apple crisp, because he thought if he can learn to work together in the kitchen, that'd be a good, good test of whether you should get married. And so, he said he was going to go buy apples. Well, it was in the fall, and I had a ton of apples. And I said, "Well, I could give you some apples. How many do you want?" Well, he says, "I need a lot." "Well, I'll give you a whole banana box." So, he wanted to know what he could do for me in return. And I said, "Well, you don't have to do anything." He said, "No, no, I want my parish to collect stuff." So, I asked him to collect soup. He said, "Okay, I'll get you 1,000 cans of soup." He brought 3,000 cans of soup, and I think my volunteers were ready to kill me because they had to pick it all up. So, I mean, that's one of the churches. And then, we get from Our Lady of the Angels in South Berwick because we also take care of Berwick. We get from the Protestant churches also. So, a lot of the churches, but that's small peanuts. I mean, it doesn't come close to what we need to give out, so.
Thank you so very much for all you do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Barry, you have a question?
Just for informational purposes, what are, you mentioned like sometimes you get milk, sometimes you get things. What are things that, and again, this is a little bit of a plug since people can watch this from home, that you're always looking for and that you're not quite getting? I heard you say soup, but I've also heard that soup can be hard, right? Because then you need a can opener and other things. So, I'm just curious, like what, what is your food bank always looking for?
We are always looking for canned pasta, baked beans, like B&amp;M Beans, and macaroni and cheese, kids' food.
Okay.
Big events. And we can't get any, well, sometimes we can get macaroni and cheese at the food bank, but they don't, they don't carry canned pasta, and they never have beans. They only have things like black beans or kidney beans, and those aren't the kind of beans most people want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from counselors? Counselor Cameron?
Good morning, Pat. I, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for all that you do for the community. I have volunteered at the Food Pantry a few times myself with my Walmart associates, and it's quite the operation. And if you're ever looking for a volunteer opportunity, help them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for all the support you've given us for so many years. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Haven. Is there a representative from Haven? Thank you. And again, if you wouldn't mind saying your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Jessie Dill Jacobs, Development Director for Haven. As you know, we work in the area of violence prevention, addressing the issues of sexual assault and domestic violence. One of 12 members of the New Hampshire Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault. We have the largest catchment area, serving Rockingham and Stratford Counties. Here in Somersworth, we serve a significant amount of population that are experiencing trauma caused by domestic violence and sexual assault. Last year, 105 residents accessed our services, seeking support, 24/7 support. There are a hotline that provides counseling as well as accompaniment to court, to police, and to hospital following experiences in domestic violence and sexual assault. Some have also accessed our shelter services, which are a significant cost for our organization on an annual basis since we sold our, I'm losing my voice, so forgive me, since we sold our shelter a couple of years ago, and we're now renting at an undisclosed location. And we also provide housing services to some of your residents as well. Those housing services provide assistance to individuals that are experiencing barriers to, to securing long-term housing, which often is, you know, one of the greatest supports to individuals following the experience of trauma caused by domestic violence or sexual assault, individuals, and sometimes with their children. The financial assistance that our housing program provides ensures that, you know, once housing is in place, everything else kind of comes, follows. In addition to our 24/7 client services that we provide and our shelter, emergency shelter services, and our housing programs, we like to prevent violence from happening in the first place. So, really, the foundation of our work in Theory of Change comes through prevention education, which, if any of you are parents, you might know about our prevention education programs that are reaching students, K through 12 students in Somersworth and throughout Rockingham and Stratford Counties. This year, we will reach 13 K through 12 students. Here in Somersworth, we're reaching Idlehurst, Maplewood, the middle and the high school. I think that's about 1,000 students that we're talking about, K through 12. These students often will see our educators in elementary school through the PUPIT curriculum that some of you might be familiar with, as well as in the middle school. When we lose the puppets because the kids are older and it's more talking about higher level issues connected to developing self-esteem and developing positive relationships. The prevention education program also reaches teachers and parents, some 100, last year when we reached your elementary schools, your middle school, and your high school. Proud to say that yesterday, one of our fundraisers, it's more of a friend raiser, if you will, is called Kids Are a Business Breakfast. And yesterday's keynote speaker, in addition to our prevention education teachers, was a guidance counselor, is a guidance counselor from Idlehurst, who proudly spoke about our prevention education programs here in Somersworth and how important they are to her and to her colleagues as part of, really an essential part of kids' education. You've heard the statistic probably about our own educations growing up, that maybe we're taking about 20% of what we learn with us into life. And what we're teaching your students here in Somersworth is part of that 20% because it's really teaching them how to keep their, that their bodies belong to them and no one else, that it's never too late to tell. And they develop self-esteem, positive self-esteem and confidence and relationships with others going forward.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions from counselors? Yes, Counselor Barry?
I might be taking your question, but I'm going to ask very similarly. Can you give a little bit of a breakdown of like where your funding comes from? Like state, federal, anything like that besides just local communities?
Our annual operating budget's about $3 million, and about a third of that comes from philanthropy, so private foundations, individuals. A fundraiser that we do, about two-thirds of that comes from federal and state sources as well and local municipalities. A big portion of the federal goes to our housing program that provides that financial assistance to individuals that are trying to get, secure long-term housing. It also supports, a big portion of it supports our 24/7 client services, which is what helps individuals, you know, access further supports to get out to flee a violent situation.
Thank you. It makes me a little sick that we even need this, but I know you do a great job and that it is obviously needed, so thank you.
Sure. Other questions from counselors? Yes, Counselor Perry Catanzaro?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because at first, I thought I heard you say you saw 13 kids, but it must be classes?
13,000.
13,000, thank you.
In our catchment area.
In the what?
In our catchment area.
Okay, so in about 1,000.
That's Rockingham and Stratford County.
Somersworth.
About 1,000 students in Somersworth last year.
Yeah. So, we really appreciate the, particularly the prevention education. It's something that we talk about here a lot, you know, our public safety services. What can we do to go further upstream and prevent these things from happening? And I know that education is really, really effective, so thank you. How does it work with your hotline? I know that there's like a greater hotline, and then how do people, how do people find you if they live here versus someone in a different part of the state?
Well, through, largely through marketing. You know, we market our number online through stickers all over our catchment area, bathroom stalls, restaurants, hospitals, and the like. We could do a better job. Of course, we're only reaching the person, the people that know about us or that see that advertising, also through our community partners as well, including police.
including police, hospitals, CAC, et cetera. Trying to think of other marketing avenues. And of course, through the Coalition. There are 12 of us, so, throughout the state. So, if someone is, you know, fleeing a violent situation, it makes sense, and they wanna go to a different part of the state, we will plug them into the... to that hotline, say it's Keene or some other part as well. So, we collaborate that way.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I was also thinking there was like a broader number where people would have to sort of be directed based on where they live. Is that true? Or do you have your own hotline number?
Oh, we have our own hotline number.
Okay, that answers. Thank you.
Someday, we'll all be plugged into one. And that is a dream of our Executive Director, Kathy Beebe.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have Cornerstone V&amp;A. Is there a representative from Cornerstone V&amp;A? Great, thank you. Again, if you wouldn't mind, please stating your name.
Yep, Jennifer Uffkin, CEO at Cornerstone V&amp;A. And I have hot off the press this week, our annual report. And I didn't know if any of the counselors wanted this.
Yeah, I think most would be willing to take it. If you wanna pass it around, yeah.
So, good morning, everybody. I just wanted to share some statistics. So, we are an independent nonprofit home, health, and hospice organization. We have five programs: home care, hospice, our community palliative care program, life care, which is our private duty, and then our community care services. And in Summersworth, for last year, we did close to 7,000 visits of close to 450 Summersworth residents. That's about 6% of our population. We currently are up to 48 towns between New Hampshire and Maine. And for un... and under reimbursed care, we did close to $50,000 in Summersworth. I'll keep it short and brief.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, Counselor Rinson, Scotty.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Thanks a lot for being here and answering my questions this morning. So, is... are you connected through Stratford County? Is that how that goes? Or are you not connected through Stratford County?
We're not connected anywhere. We are independent. We serve five communities in New Hampshire: Rockingham, Stratford, Carroll County. There's a whole bunch of them. Bellknap, and then we're York County and Maine.
Thank you. And there's... but there's no connection through the hospitals? Nothing? And, yeah, sources of funding?
So, we do receive state through Medicaid and federal funding through Medicare primarily, and commercial payers. The downfall is, everyone I'm sure is very interested in the state budget. Medicaid is anticipating proposing a 3% cut. This for 2026 and another 3% in 2027. We currently get 70 cents on a dollar. So, to add another 3% cut. Commercial payers, we do not get fully reimbursed for the contracted rates that we have. So, we rely on Medicare. And with the extra that we get with Medicare, helps support our underfunded programs. But our... because we're mission-driven, everything we give back to community, like, we do a lot of wellness clinics and community education. We're gonna be working with the Summersworth Rec to provide some education to the community. And we work with Summersworth Housing to provide some clinics in those buildings. None of that is compensated. So, we rely on city support to help offset a lot of the losses that we receive.
Thank you for that. And thank you so very much for what you do. It's very crucial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Witherman?
Thank you. Falls under our community support section of our budget here in Summersworth. You rattled off a number of counties. Probably try to do the math to figure out how many cities and towns are in those counties, but I'll spare myself on the Saturday morning. Do you receive community support from every community within all of those counties? Or are we the norm or are we the exception to the rule?
We ask for community support from all of our towns and communities. And we're at 48 of those between those different counties that we serve. And the majority of them do contribute to Cornerstone. And we do use a formula based off of the population that we get from the communities of what our ask is.
So, 48 communities provide community support?
Not all of them. We ask.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Perry, Katzenzera.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to hold it together. I just wanna thank you for waiting. My dad used your services last year. And so, I was gonna calmly just tell some folks some of the amazing work that you do. So, he was very thankfully on Medicare. There were people that came out to the house that were social workers, that were able to connect his family and his kid and his wife with services. I used the grief counseling services there after my dad passed. There were specialists that came out for mobility, for helping him swallow, for advising us about hospice that could be brought into the house, advising him when he was in the hospital. And it was just incredible to have that number to call if there was any question about medication, if there was really any support that he needed. So, I just can't thank you enough. I had heard of Cornerstone V&amp;A and didn't really know what they did until our family needed it. And it's... it just really, really blew my mind, the level of care and support that you offer to people. And, yeah, I just... I would give you a million dollars if I could. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Other questions from counselors? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, next on our list is Community Action Program. Is there a representative from Community Action Program? Thank you so much. Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
Hello, my name is John Moynihan. And I am the Chief Advancement Officer at Community Action Partnership of Stratford County. So, it's in Stratford County, we provide, in calendar year 2024, over $14.5 million worth of services to the communities. And in Summersworth, we leveraged just over $1.6 million worth of services to 2,100 residents of the city. And that comes out to about 294 households received $317,000 worth of fuel assistance. 345 households received a discount on their electric bill to the amount of $182,420. 20 households received weatherization services for about $190,000. And 55 children received early education and care, childcare through our Head Start, early Head Start programs for just about, just under $800,000 worth of services. And that's only a portion of the work that we do throughout the county, throughout the city of Summersworth. And we are very grateful for all the support we receive from the city and for the ability to be able to serve the residents and the families of the city of Summersworth.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Questions from counselors? Counselor Witherman?
I think I've asked this before, but I forget. So, apologies. Do you work hand in glove with our Human Services Office here in Summersworth?
We work with all...
Is there a connection?
We... So, we all work together with all sorts of the human services, the welfare offices, to make sure that we are referring as many folks as we can to receive as many services and support as they can.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Yes, Counselor Berry?
Not so much a question, but I just wanted to say thank you for the packet that you provided that gave a lot of... that's why I don't necessarily have questions, because you answered a lot of it already. So, I just didn't want that to go unnoticed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is the Summersworth Festival Association. Thank you so much. And again, if you could state your name for the record.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Donald Hood. I'm the President of the Summersworth Festival Association. Glad to be here and glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Festival Association? Yes, Counselor Peppin?
Don, if you could, just go through some of the stuff that the Children's Festival actually does for the city of Summersworth and what they do.
Okay. Thought that might happen. So... Can't see anymore. The Summersworth Children's Festival is a group that our mission is establish, to foster civic pride in the community, cultural and historic heritage, promote community identity, and stimulate involvement of residents in the community activities through sponsorship and support of the arts and art-related activities with special attention to the needs of young people. To this end, the activities shall include raising funds for producing an annual festival in the city of Summersworth and acquiring and maintaining necessary facilities. Other activities include, but are not limited to, producing additional community events, providing financial support for the arts program in area schools, and granting scholarship to deserving students. And to list some of the things we do, we do about 14 events in the community. And as I've said before, we're the guys that bring fun to Summersworth. Very proud of that. We have, in February, a breakfast with Frosty. This Spring Craft Fair is a fundraiser that happens on May 3rd. We have our Children's Festival that is June 21st. And we're gonna have Celebration Night, which is our fireworks, on June 27th. We have five kids' concerts. July 9th with Steve Blunt, July 16th with Wildlife Encounters, July 23rd with Tricky Dick Magician, July 30th with Rockin' Ron, and August 6th, Mr. Harley. These are all kid... they aim at entertaining children. Pumpkin Fest comes in October, on October 11th. The Harvest Craft Fair, another fundraiser, is gonna be October 25th this year. On November 23rd, we have the Penny Sale. We have a Holiday Craft Fair, December 6th. And not least of all, but we always try to help and support the Indonesian folks in town with their Indonesian Festival in September. So, we keep pretty busy. And we did... we had not provided any grants to the arts for a few years because of our financial situation. Our financial situation got better. Last year, we donated a good sum of money to five schools in town, the city schools and the private school down on West High Street.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Ken.
Yes, Counselor Rinson and Counselor Berry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Don, great nonprofit organization. Really, really well put together. How long now? Remind me again how long Children's Festival has been operating?
Well, it's over 40 years. It's like 43, 44 years.
Wow, it tells me how old I'm getting. So, I know I've donated personally through my companies. It's typically a match with the fireworks thing. And nevertheless, let me ask you this. Does the city, besides financial assistance, does the city help out the Children's Festival? Like, with public works? Can you just give me an overview?
On those lines, every time we have a outdoor event, which is like the Children's Festival, a Pumpkin Festival, and so on, the city always provides help distributing picnic tables, putting out barriers, putting out trucks to... for safety for our people. Whenever we have a craft fair, the city is more than generous, allowing us to use the high school and the kitchen in the high school and so forth. They've never been... turned us down. They provide janitors. Now, we know that that's a big expense. And we're very, very appreciative of everything the city does. But we couldn't do it without you.
Thanks a lot for that. And thanks a lot for all the volunteers that help out. I know it takes a lot. And I know through the years, the staff has been getting a little older. And we've been losing...
Yeah, that's a big thing. So, if there's anybody else that wants to join, we need people in their 30s, 40s. Young people would be 50 years old, would still be young.
Thank you.
Counselor Berry?
I'm glad you did the plug 'cause I'm like, you're here, plug away. Get people to get out here. My question was kind of around, I know you guys do a lot of events. You just went through a long list of events. I know, I hear from other communities that they actually enjoy coming to Summersworth for a lot of these events. Can you go into... you mentioned you do fundraising events to help, kind of like where the other funding comes from? Like, is it donation? Is it groups? Just stuff like that?
We have a fairly extensive list of things to do. Half of them are fundraisers, like the craft fairs, the penny sales. We also are involved with the Dover Poker Room. So, we're... we get benefit from that. Let's see. Oh, yeah. And we do get sponsorships in the community. I don't wanna forget about that. We get a lot of people that feel that it's a good thing and donate and sponsor different things at different events. You'll see the signs at Children's Festivals or Pumpkin Festivals. Somebody might pay for the band or this or that. Our budget is always over $100,000 a year. Our next year's projected budget is in a, you know, $130-plus thousand. And we're doing good right now. But we've had some years where we're skimping by month to month. And so, we're always glad to come here. And we wanna partner up with the city. And we feel that the city's money goes directly to Kenny. So, that's a good thing, you know?
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Hi, Don. I just need a clarification. This year, is it on the 21st of June and not the 23rd?
The Children's Festival?
Yeah.
21st, yeah.
'Cause I thought you said the 23rd. So, I was like, wait a minute. And I just want to... I've been involved with the festival off and on over the 30-plus years that I've been around.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
I... it's one of the best things I've ever done. I love the events. I love helping out. And yes, you can count on me for vendor check-in, Pat. So... And yes, he's right. If anybody is younger that would like to hop on board, as most of us are getting older and with the lifting and coordination of everything, they certainly could use some extra help. But again, thank you for all you do. And I love being a part of that organization.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from counselors? Okay. Seeing none, thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have Crossroads House. Is anyone from Crossroads House here today? Anyone from Crossroads? Seeing none, we will move on. All right, brings us to AIDS Response. Anyone from AIDS Response? Anyone from AIDS Response? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next is Stratford Meals on Wheels. Anyone from Stratford Meals on Wheels? Thank you. Thank you. Again, if you could state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Katie Cordova-Brooks. I'm the Executive Director of Strafford Meals on Wheels. Our, our program has been in Strafford County for over forty-five years. We provide, it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. We provide a hot meal at lunchtime daily Monday through Friday to all the areas of Strafford County. We have three different sites. One of them is located just right up the street, out of the Somersworth Housing Authority. We provide meals to about seventy-eight residents of Somersworth each day, adding up to thousands of meals throughout the course of a year. One thing that I always like to point out is that Meals on Wheels is so much more than just a meal. We provide necessary check-ins and wellness checks for all of our participants. All of our participants that we deliver to are over the age of sixty, which, by the way, just fun fact, I just discovered the other day that in New Hampshire, we have a particularly older population. Our sixty and over population takes up more than twenty-seven percent of New Hampshire's total population. So, we're aging. And in addition to that, we also deliver to disabled individuals. The vast majority of our participants live alone, so they don't have somebody that's coming to check on them daily. And so that's, that's what we do. If somebody doesn't answer the door, we, we walk in, we, we call out for them. And if we can't find them, then we, we call the police and start to get a wellness check going. Yeah, so if anybody has any questions for me?
Thank you so much. Questions? Yes, Council Rinson?
Thank you. Great program. It's through Strafford County, correct?
Yes.
It's funded through major, through, what's your fundings again? I'm sorry?
We have, we're mostly federally funded.
Yep.
Comes down through the state. We do have funding from Strafford County, and we also put out requests to all of the towns that we serve.
And I just was visiting a friend yesterday when one of your drivers arrives. Not only do they deliver hot food- The food was hot. It's not cold food. It's hot food. And it was hot. They also deliver some companionship to people who may be getting up there in age. And as we, as we get older, we lose friends and family, and you're left sitting in your house all by yourself, with sometimes no one to talk to. So this service also provides someone to come in and say, hey, how's it going? So thank you so very much for all you do. It's, it's definitely something that is definitely appreciated, not only for the people that don't have the capabilities of having a nice warm meal, but for the loved ones too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Pepin?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank your services. My, my father was using your service for a short period of time before he ended up in a rest home, but I don't know what he enjoyed most, is the person come and delivering the meals, so he had someone to talk to. And it made me feel good that at least somebody else was checking in on him outside of myself at times. So hats off to your community and what you do. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from councilors? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Somersworth Lions Club. Again, thank you. If you could, please state your name for the record.
Good morning. I am Peter Hood. I'm the President of the Somersworth Lions Club. You guys have all seen me before and know a lot about what we do for the community, but I'll add a few stats to the packet since, since I submitted it. And the people love to hear about the skating rink and the, all the stats there. So this year, we skated from December twenty-third to March third. That was the first day and the last day of ice. So we skated fifty-four days, where we're open for the public to come at their will and skate. And then fifteen days, we were closed due to snow and temperatures. And overall, we had a great skating season, and that was great. We, we do a lot more than ice skating. It's in the packet, but any questions?
All right, yeah. Questions from councilors? Yeah, Council Pepin?
I'd just like to comment on one thing. They put up a lighting system around that skating rink. It's unreal in the parking lot. My hats off to you, to you and your dad for, for doing it. I know you put a lot of time into it or whatever, so it's, it's deeply appreciated. It's, it's a big upgrade in, in what you had to before, so thank you.
Council Rinson?
Thank you. And just another comment. You know, you've taken the skating rink and that property to another level. I know in the past year, you've gone in with some reclaimed asphalt and actually have done the whole parking lot. So you used to drive in, it used to be like a mud situation where, you know, there was holes and people were going over there, and it just was, not in a dilapidated state, but, and that's only one of the things that you've done. You've done work through putting an addition on to the, the old barn that Bob Creighton actually built out of the old skating rink boards. I remember that. So thanks a lot for all you've done, and to add to the community, not only for the youth, but for child, children's services for, because the children's charity, that's the whole, that's the whole basis of the Lions Club, is the children's charity, not only eyesight and hearing, but more. And thank you very much for that.
Yeah, of course. I mean, we're gearing up in, in April and May this year. We're going to go to both elementary schools. We're going to do vision screenings on, on all the kids' eyes. And we have the medical assistance program where, like wheelchairs, walkers, people call us, you know, we get one or two calls a week for somebody needs a wheelchair. They borrow it for a week. They just had surgery and they don't want to buy a wheelchair. So we've started collecting that stuff, and we have a program where they can do it. So, yeah, we do a lot of good things.
Thank you.
Council Rinson?
In, in terms of operational expense for the Lions Club, obviously probably have some electricity needs for your facilities, the lighting that others have spoken about. Other operational expenses, I, I have to believe one of your biggest expenses is insurance. I can't imagine insuring a skating surface. I run the Babe Ruth Baseball Program here, and that insurance is thousands and thousands of dollars, and I'd argue that I'm underinsured. It scares me. Talk to me about expenses.
So, one of, so we do, as part of Lions International, we have insurance through them. As far as our facilities go, if we were to catch fire today, we'd be fundraising tomorrow. So we're not insured in that respect because, because of the expense. Our biggest thing, you know, is your, your gas, your electric and all that. So last year, somebody did donate solar, so we're hoping to be, we're hoping the electricity for next year to come in at hopefully net zero. That was a big thing. And then just glasses and hearing aids are probably the most expensive. So we help a lot of seniors. I would say old, it's the older people and the younger people, kids. So any kid within our schools, if the nurse calls, they do fill out the application, but we don't really turn them down. We'll help all the kids, and, but that's probably the biggest, I guess, expense aside from the utilities.
Thank you. Other questions? Council Cameron?
Hi, Pete. One of the questions I had, so the increase of the donation that you're asking for is that to help cover the costs of your projects coming up and projected costs of running the Lions Club? And where does most of your funding come from?
So our, our largest funding source historically has been Christmas tree sales, that fundraiser. It's turned into kind of a community event almost, where people come. We see the same people every year. It's, it's kind of fun. A few years ago, we did get into the Dover Casino, and that's something that we can't really rely on as a funding source, but it's, it's something that is there, and it's been good. But we are, we are working also towards some more capital improvements on our facility, so that building itself is, is kind of dilapidated, rotting. The roof has started leaking. We're, so we're patching stuff. So we have some much larger things on the horizons that the, hopefully the casino will, will help fund, but we can't rely on it. So that's why it's kind of future stuff.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Council Gibson?
I'm dating myself probably, but Lions Club in my hometown did collection for used eyeglasses. Do you guys still do that?
Absolutely, yep.
Good. I got about six pairs.
Yeah, we probably do like, I don't know, five or six hundred pairs a year. They come in, usually the, there's a box, I think, at the library, but a lot of it comes from optometrists in funeral homes. So those are the two places where we get a lot of glasses, and we collect them. We give them to the Hampton Club. The Hampton Club will sort them and clean them, and then they go off on like mission trips around the world to help give glasses to people in need.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have Malley Farm for Women. Again, thank you. And again, as a reminder, please state your name for the record.
I'm Monet Cassier. I'm the Executive Director at Malley Farm for Women. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone else. Good to be here. Thank you for supporting us through another amazing year. But before I begin, I'd like to introduce a couple new board members. We have Jeff Prey, who, his family owned the Malley Farm for four generations, and nineteen thirty-nine sold it to the Malley family. And we have Bob Malley, who's with us also, who have joined our Board of Directors. So it's a really good feel. This has happened, just the spirits moved this to happen. And then we have Mandy, who is Support Staff and my backbone. So I wanted to introduce them, because it takes a village. And so as you know, Malley Farm for Women services women healing from all forms of trauma. I also want to state that we support the LGBTQI community. It's been a weird first two thousand twenty-five. I wanted to come up with a better word, but that is the word that keeps coming to my brain, is weird, in that we run on private donation and the minimal rent that the residents pay. We're getting a lot of calls of women that are being laid off, housing insecurity. But with the new model, we're able to service women for a shorter length of time. So just recently, I've serviced, we have serviced women for two or three days. They get grounded, then we're able to refer them to other services of places that we've heard from today. And our budget is right around one fifty a year, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Let's see. I'm going to mention the landscaping, because the barn that was out back, that is no longer there, the foundation, so because of the foundation, there's sinkholes. So the backyard is actually kind of dangerous, but I, we've been getting by with filling the holes, and it might not sound like a big deal, but if you have a woman with children running around. So the landscaping, the, unfortunately, the giving tree out front, the big sugar maple, has to come down. So that's a tough topic, but, and in the meantime, know that Malley Farm for Women, we receive calls all day long from all walks of life. The doorway, the Dover doorway that is affiliate of Wentworth Douglas Hospital closes. They're nine to five, Monday through Friday. Well, people need help at ten PM Saturday, Sunday mornings, they're hurting. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't mention it often, but we do provide that service if they need to come and spend some time, a nice hot meal. So we are requesting assistance again this year in hopes of you supporting us.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Questions? Council Rinson?
Thank you. Thanks a lot for coming out today.
Hi.
So you mentioned that there's some grounds issues. Certainly don't want to step out of bounds, but maybe we can assist in somehow Public Works if we brought a couple loads of gravel up there. Talk further with the city manager and see if we can help you out in any way to save some funds in that respect. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And I will put a plug in for Public Works. As I've said before, that they, they really help us all the time. You know, I will say that, but it's a great idea. Thank you so much. Jerry and Mike are on standby twenty-four seven for me, just so you know that.
All right. Other questions from councilors? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. All right. Brings us to Pope Memorial Humane Society. Pope Memorial Humane Society. Anyone here? Okay. We will move on. All right. That concludes our previous community-
Your Honor, there were three new asks. I don't know if there's anybody from those organizations-
Oh, no, I'm getting there. I just wanted to clarify that those were the requests that we had previously funded in years past. We are now going to move to the new request. So if you had requested funds for, you know, to be included in the upcoming budget for the first time, we will now get to yours. First on that list is Casa. Is there anyone from Casa here today? Anyone from Casa? Seeing none, we'll move to the next. Next is Sweetster. Is there anyone from Sweetster here today? Sweetster. Okay. We'll move to Thriving Roots Daycare. And thank you. If you could state your name, that would be much appreciated.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Michelle Wersler. I'm a resident of Somersworth, New Hampshire, as well as a board member for Thriving Roots Childcare. So we're currently asking for a one-time funding for seven thousand five hundred dollars, and that's specifically to expand our pre-K classroom from thirteen to nineteen students. So you might be wondering, why should we invest in a, in a pre-K classroom? We know that there's a nationwide shortage, and I think that's a great question. It's something I'd be wondering if I was in your shoes today. And I think to answer that question, we really got to think about the bigger picture. Somersworth has done a really great job with expanding housing options across the city. And when we think about one of the great ones that we see that's coming in, the Chemburg property, that's me bringing in additional two hundred and seventy units over the next, I think they're going to be opening up in like two years. When we think about those housing, we're going to be wanting to bring in new families. And a lot of those cases that we're going to be seeing is going to be younger families wanting to move their families to Somersworth. The number one thing that families, especially young families, look at when they're looking to relocate their families is childcare and schooling. So when we think about the original question, why should we invest in pre-K, we have the ability to say, Somersworth, by investing in pre-K, we're able to entice those families to come in, because it's something that no other town in city is willing to do right now, because it's a problem that like, no one really wants to look at, because why? But by investing in it, we're enabling families to say, I want to come to Somersworth. And then when we think about, going back to Thriving Roots, so we're, not only are we giving the families a reason to come to Somersworth, but investing in us now will allow us to make, bring in that new lead teacher, so we can expand that pre-K classroom to nineteen. And then when we start expanding the housing within Somersworth, we have that space, so that way, we can give preferential treatment to those families coming into Somersworth. So really, we think about it, it's not just giving us the money, it's really investing in the future of Thriving Roots, but the Somersworth as a whole. I just want to reiterate, it's a one-time donation, because we do feel like we can get funding from other areas. We've already successfully done that through a GoFundMe page. We're at about twenty-five thousand there. We have an Amazon wishlist, which has been enabling us to get a lot of our cleaning supplies, things like that. We're also in the avenue of going through grants. We've also done some media pitches. You might have seen us on the NPR this week, which very nicely written article, which is really great to see. But when we think about the investment, investments happen over time, right? So by expanding from the thirteen to the nineteen students, over five years, that's an additional thirty students that we can help support for the city of Somersworth. And when we think about pre-K classrooms, they're really essential to setting up students for going into kindergarten, and then as well as future pieces in the school district. So when we think about, again, investing in us, we're investing in the city of Somersworth, and we can really think about where the future of Somersworth starts today. So I welcome any and all questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from council? Yes, Council Goodwin?
What percent of the, the students are Somersworth residents?
So just in the pre-K classroom, about forty percent.
So about forty percent. Are you guys seeking financial support from other towns?
We will be, yes.
And just for clarification, the, there's two hundred and seventy units of multifamily housing being constructed in downtown. They're not, it's two different projects. They're not all Chemburg projects. And then I would also note, as someone in the industry, that these types of apartments don't typically house a lot of children. So I would anticipate from that number of apartments, you might get five school-aged children. Shockingly, low numbers, just not the type of people that are attracted to those units, and tend to be older folks or younger folks that don't have children, and just in general, people having less kids these days. But very much here in need, and thank you for your service.
I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you. Other questions? Council Parity-Catanzera?
Hi, thanks. I have been following this a little bit, and I know that part of why you all started is the closure of a different childcare. Can you talk a little bit about the timeline of like how you came to be?
Yeah, so our rates went up about fifty percent in November, so they went a little over five hundred dollars per week. And then the end of January, we were informed that the daycare was closing. So between, we kind of, with the rates increasing, we had started the Board of Directors in December, and then by middle of February, we were able to open up the new daycare as a nonprofit.
That's very amazing. In a very short timeline.
And we've actually had some other daycare centers reach out to us to see how they can actually start, which will hopefully help also with the childcare shortage.
So do you know roughly how many, like, kids were being seen at the place that closed, and then how many you have been able to?
Yeah. It's a great question. We're, right now, it's at sixty-eight percent. I think most were from the previous daycare, but then there's a good portion of it from the new people coming in. in. And we do have, some of the rooms have a waitlist already as well. Thanks. You're welcome.
Other questions? Counselor Witham?
Yeah, just a bit more clarity around perhaps what brings them here today and for the ask. And thank you for persevering. As council might recall, I did report out some months ago now that your group, which was in its infancy at the time, did come to a finance committee meeting. Unfortunately, we had a communication breakdown, and they waited in the hall while we waited in here. We didn't know each other were here, and we adjourned the meeting. But the manager and I met with, with, with you and others afterwards. And we were in the middle of a budget. We didn't have any funding allotted for the request. I think we did send you some information on some other funding streams that you could look at, and it sounds like you are doing that.
Yep.
And did suggest that they could perhaps place an ask for the, the next budget cycle, hence you're here. So again, thank you for persevering and--
Awesome. Yes, and we appreciate those other options because we definitely looked into them, and they've been super helpful.
Other questions from councilors? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much. Great. So for those following along on page C8 at home, that does conclude the list, although we do know of at least one more that I'd like to add before I open it up to any others. We have the Summersworth Community Chamber of Commerce, who did submit a request. Invite them up if anyone from the chamber would like to speak. Again, for the record, please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Bonnie McNair, as you all have come to know. I know, I stand up here quite a lot. So yes, I did submit a request to help the chamber stay functioning, stay operating. We're under, we've been under a lot of financial duress in the past, when I look, more than five years. They've been operating at a negative budget. And because there were always funds in the contingency, they just, and no ill will towards whoever was in this job before. Everybody who's had this job has had a tough, tough position. But now that puts the, the chamber at jeopardy, right? I think when we don't have a chamber, we don't have the economic development that we need. Our surrounding cities all invest in their chambers. They all invest in the economic development. They all invest in business growth. And as a result, they're all growing. Summersworth seems to be getting there. And my goal is to do everything I possibly can to get us there. I'm one person, and I'm working 60, 70 hours a week to get us there. I can't do it without the support of our businesses with our, and, and from our city, quite frankly. Every other city around here helps to fund their chamber as a matter of a budget line item. Many of them have public-private partnerships. And I think that regardless of the relationship that the chamber has had in the past with the city, I think we need to just take a hard look and go, what do we want for our, what do we want for our, our city? What do we want for our citizens? What do we want for our businesses? And set aside whatever has gone before and, and start with now. I'm not concerned with before. I'm concerned with what's happening now. And how do we, how do we get to yes? I don't know that what I have proposed is even possible. But we have to get to yes if we want to get the city where it is no longer plateauing, that it's growing. Our surrounding cities are answering the call of the times and growing where it's needed. We all have to get creative in how we're spending money. We all have to get created and how, or get creative in how we're supporting each other, our businesses, our residents. Our residents want to see more. They want to see their tax dollars going places. I'm here providing some of those solutions in, in my job. And that is all. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, questions from councilors? Yes, Counselor Gibson, and then Parry, Count Zara.
Could you just, for the public, for lack of a better term, explain what your mission statement is in general?
Yes. So our mission is to provide an economic environment that is favorable for businesses. So we're here to support businesses' growth. We work with many other organizations to support the economic growth of both our business landscape and our community at the same time. I think the community side of that has not been a priority in the past. And I'm really, part of my mission now is, is to make those connections. We have so many different community groups doing things separately. And I really am, am trying to get us all working towards the same goals together. So nobody's really duplicating efforts. So our mission is, is in supporting the growth of businesses by working with other organizations to get folks whatever resources they need to make that happen.
Thank you. Counselor Parry, Count Zara?
Yes, thank you. I think a lot of folks know what chambers used to be. And it was a lot of, you know, just strictly business and networking and things like that. And this community piece that you're talking about, I have really seen through your education of people around taxes and civic education. So I wonder if you'd talk a little bit about those new areas that you have been sort of expanding into, which is beyond just business, helping educate our members of the community about just how the city works.
Yeah. So I found it really interesting to see that so many people around, and it's just in conversations, it's in reviewing social media. I found it interesting that folks really want results. And they don't necessarily, they're very frustrated with things, as we all are. And they don't necessarily know how things work. And when people are frustrated, they just want the answer. So my, my real solution to that has been, listen, I mean, we're all, we're all in this together. And as we all know, a rising tide raises all ships. So somebody has to be the one. I feel like I am connected to literally everyone. Anytime somebody comes to me and says, oh, well, we're trying to do this. I know a guy. I know a guy. I know an organization. I know a lady. I, I just, and I've found that part of what I do best is getting people the knowledge and the resources that they need. And I think that the chamber, while many people have historically thought that the chamber is a membership, business, networking, pay-to-play type of situation, the chamber is much, much more than that. I was reminded at the DC Fly-in that I went into last year, when speaking with the US Chamber, that there's so many more things that we can be doing to bring those entities together. I work very closely with the Summersworth Festival Association, now the parade. So we're bringing businesses into the parade. I'm encouraging all the businesses to work with like the fest, the Children's Festival, the Indonesian Festival. We're doing an international food festival, bringing the retail environment and the restaurant environment together to really just highlight our area. And if we can get those businesses here, we can get that community piece here. So we can, I'm actually working with the Secretary of State on the, on the civil piece that you just talked about, because I know I just went off in a rant. I do that. But I'm now working with the Secretary of State's office to get us real resources. Senator Waters has offered to come speak and talk about different civic engagement pieces. We're doing the US Civics Beef for the children, which is starting in, on our country's 250th birthday. So that's going to be an amazing kind of conversation for the kids. I'm now working with the high school. I just kind of set it up with the CTC kids. Their, their final project is going to be to learn to network, learn to speak with people face to face. Their final project is going to be to plan from start to finish, marketing and everything, a networking event. We're going to bring businesses into them so they can get some real world access to knowledge. And I'm working with the schools to find a way to get those kids that aren't on a CTC track. Because as we all know, that is a commitment. And a lot of our kids, we have the college, the college kids, we have the, the CTC kids. What about the ones who don't know? So I'm working with the schools and the business community to help them find that thing, to help them understand that even if you are going to work right after school, one, you can stay here and do it, and work, and, and earn a very respectable living. You're not limited. And let's help you find your passion. And so those are some of the things we're doing to connect so many people, because it just seems like everyone's so siloed here. And just from a big picture perspective, we can change that. I always say that if the rules are the problem, and we make the rules, the math is kind of simple here. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Counselor Goodwin?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Bonnie, that I really appreciate your tenacity and passion in this role. And it feels, the chamber under your leadership feels drastically different than chambers of recent years. And it's a breath of fresh air and encouraging. I'm going to restate my understanding of sort of where I see the chamber's role versus what would be like an economic development position on the city side. So I see the chamber's role as capacity building of small businesses, like direct engagement with those small businesses. It is collective advertisement. It is community development, but amongst and between the business community. And it's business advocacy for those businesses to whatever entity those businesses need. And as a small business owner, an individual might not have that ability. And someone like Bonnie, who's a connector and a well-organized and funded chamber, is able to fill some of those capacity gaps, work collectively amongst many different small businesses to build both those, those businesses individually, and then collectively. And an economic development person in the city of Summersworth, I think much of that is beyond their scope. Their job is not to hold the hand of a small business owner to get them to the next level. An economic development person in the city of Summersworth might focus on recruitment. They're going to focus on incentives. They're going to focus on policy. And that's all important and part of the puzzle. And there's certainly some, you know, some Venn diagrams, some overlap between some of these activities. But, you know, even if the city had the appetite to hire an economic development professional on staff, I don't think that person would achieve all of the aims that the chamber is seeking to do. And I think there's value in what the chamber does. So in general, I just want to applaud your, your efforts. I certainly hope we can fund the chamber this year. I obviously can't make a commitment with the, the budget season and all of, all the opinions amongst the fellow councilors here. But thank you.
Counselor Witham?
Thank you. I appreciate the ask. I would agree with Counselor Goodwin with regard to your tenacity and energy. So thank you for that. Here's just an observation. We've spent just shy of two hours talking about one page in the budget that represents less than half a percent of our overall budget expenditure. It's tiny. And if you eliminate the coast bus request, I'm not sure my calculator on my phone can come up with the number, right? It's tiny. We should be able to meet these requests.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Barry?
Very similar to what has been said. When I first came to Summersworth and I applied to one of our boards, I, there was a big disconnect between some of the local communities, specifically in the Historic District Commission. The chamber at the time brought us together to have conversations. Because again, to your point, it was a lot of misconception, assumptions, different things. And I know Bonnie has made a great effort in trying to fix some of those bad assumptions, just things that people hear that are not necessarily true. So I very much applaud, applaud you doing that. And I look forward to having more things. I know you've mentioned having informational sessions with the city and different things, because sometimes if the city puts it on, people are apprehensive. So I think we can work very well with the chamber. I really hope the chamber does move forward, especially because I have seen some great things happening. Can you just talk about, like, are there other places you're looking for funding besides, I know you also work with other communities besides Summersworth, but just kind of around that a little bit?
Yeah. So we do have five towns in our catchment area, Summersworth being the largest, but also Rollinsford and all three of the Burwicks. Historically, none of them have contributed in any way to the chamber, at least not in recent history that I'm aware of. That being said, I'm also partnering, partnering very closely with Burwick. We're really talking about some, some interesting and exciting things about partnering our downtowns, revitalizing our Main Street programs, and really becoming true sister cities in, in a sense, which, which doesn't happen a lot over state lines. So that's really exciting. I think we've, we've kind of tried our hand at that before, and it's not worked well. But I think we have some fresh eyes on this particular problem. That being said, we do, we are, we are funded 100% by membership and sponsorships. And we have different avenues at getting some of that other funding. Before, we had technical kind of limitations. We were limited by our abilities to track people and get, get in touch with people. I've since made some really important advancements in our technology capabilities, which are going to allow me to not only include every business in our catchment area in our directory and get every business a, a light on their, on what they do, but also to reach out to them, to connect with them. Where I'm one person with no staff yet, we, we do hope that'll grow. And if we can get, you know, our, our membership numbers to where they need to be, I, I know that now that we can reach those people, we're going to be a very flourishing chamber in years to come. It's really just me hanging in there and, and holding on while we, while we get those, that momentum built.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I know that you guys have a very difficult job ahead of you. The, the weight of the decisions you now have to make are not lost on me even a little bit. And I appreciate all that you guys are doing, all that you do every day for our city. I feel like you got, you're all underappreciated. And I'm not just saying that because I want money. So I really very much, I really very much feel that way. You all have a huge impact. And I know you all want to say yes to all the things because you want to do the right thing. And I appreciate the decision. I don't envy at all the decisions you have to make, but I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Really? Thank you. So you don't want money?
No, I do. No, 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 no. Definitely, definitely need money.
Thank you. All right. Are there other requests that we have not received that would like to come forward at this time? Any other final requests? All right. Seeing none, we will take a five-minute recess. We are going to return from our recess. Thank you, thank you. All right. I think we're down just one counselor. Fortunately, Counselor Witham had a call. He was called to go work, actually. So he had to get pulled. So we have our down counselor with him now. But again, I envision he will be watching this later. He normally does. So I just want to lay the groundwork for this half of the day. Our mission is to go essentially page by page through our budget. Again, this is an opportunity for councilors to ask questions. Again, this is an opportunity for councilors to ask questions. I also encourage you to share ideas. Again, I'm not, we will not be making decisions today, so I'm not looking for any amendments. But what I am looking for is for you to have the opportunity to potentially share thoughts that may come up on Monday or the future Mondays that we have slated to work on this budget. So again, fewer surprises at our council meetings mean better potential for a budget that we can all kind of get behind. And so I highly encourage, as we go from page to page, that if there's specific items on those pages that you have thoughts about, I'd love to hear from you and I'm sure the other councilors would as well. Let me just make sure I'm not missing anything. I think that's mostly it. So yeah, we'll start on the revenue section on C1 and we're going to literally just work our way through and I'll just offer up ideas for each page or look for ideas for, on each page. We'll kind of work our way through. We have department heads and city manager here today to help answer any questions. Hopefully you took the time this past couple of weeks to reach out to them with any specific questions so they could be prepared. And if they aren't able to answer them today, I bet you they will take their time to make sure they get an answer to an email or by Monday's meeting. So again, we cannot expect them to be perfect experts on everything, but I imagine they have most, 99% of our answers that we would need today. So looking at page C1 again, this is our revenue section. It essentially is a very short section that goes C1 and C2. So I will open it up to questions or ideas on anything from pages C1 and C2 in our revenue section. Yes, city manager?
I would just point out that on C2, use of fund balance, I'm recommending a $200,000 increase. A fund balance is, is, is healthy and Scott and I believe that we, we can increase it without, you know, suffering a balance.
Appreciate that. So I have a question, if that's okay? So our current level of our fund balance is 13.12%. Your increase to 2 million, does that incorporate that percentage or does it, will it change the percentage after?
I mean, if it stayed flat, it would reduce that percentage, but then obviously there'll be some that'll go back in at the end of this year that we're not sure what that will be, but so it all will accumulate once we close the books.
Great. And again, just for everyone watching at home, what's the percentage range that we aim to be within?
Our fund balance policy is anywhere between 5 and 17%.
Thank you.
So we're on the, we're on the high end. We're healthy.
Good. Appreciate that. And city manager, question for you. That increase of 200,000, was that specifically tied to kind of the one-time costs that you come up with that number based on that? Or was it more just based on the healthy nature of the fund balance I'm asking?
I think it's twofold. In order to meet the tax cap and continue to provide the services that we provide and the fact that it's a healthy fund balance.
Yeah, just so, again, for those watching at home, typically this council, in the past when we've increased the fund balance, we've done so to ensure that we have one-time costs that we can account for, for the use of that, those funds, because again, year in and year out, that, once we increase that fund balance rate, it typically stays through to the next budget, which means we want to be able to ensure that we have the funds to be able to utilize in the future. So we don't, you know, we typically don't pay for things that are yearly costs like salaries out of our fund balance. We typically think, oh, this is a one-time thing that we can pay for, we can justify its use within the fund balance, again, which I often have referenced as our savings account, if you will. So again, if you, your stove dies, dip into your savings to pay for the stove. But again, you're not going to pay your electric bill that you have every month with your savings account, hopefully. Hopefully that clarifies that. Other questions or comments about the revenue section? Counsel Parity-Cotanzaro?
Yes, so on page C1, under intergovernmental city, the meals and rooms tax distribution, which is the same as last year. How do we go about knowing if that is going to be accurate and is it impacted or is it potentially impacted by, you know, I'm reading a lot about the state legislature, talking about this rate going up or down. Can you talk about that?
We don't know what it's going to be for sure. We just always budget the same to keep it level funded, but you're absolutely right. It could be impacted by whatever the state does at the budget and we don't know what that number is until September or October.
Yeah, just to your, to your point, Counsel Parity-Cotanzaro, the, I believe it was the House Finance Committee that has been working on the state budget did include in their potential proposal to reduce the revenue sharing with municipalities for this particular line item, for this particular meals and rooms tax. There, again, there's still many months before the state will determine its final budget and whether that will stay or not, we don't know. But it's really worth highlighting that there is a lot of uncertainty in both Concord and Washington DC right now, unfortunately. So other questions from councilors on this particular page or two pages? Excuse me. Okay, thank you. We'll move to our next one, C3.
Ms. Smith?
Is this about C1 and C2?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I don't know if you can say this or inform this. We have a number of projects in the city that, I forgot the correct term for it, but the reduced tax load while they're in development. Are there any of those projects that are coming online as far as having the assessments brought up to market value in the near future?
Talking about 91E, so that is?
So yeah, are you referencing like projects that have maybe had their tax rate held that, or the assessment held for a period of time?
Right. Like Elm Street is now and it'll be seven years before it has full assessment.
City manager or finance director?
I think he's talking about the Community Revitalization Act. It's commonly referred to as 79E. We can get you a list, but yeah, we've had ones that have come off and now are at full assessment. Many of them are still on because they've been a range of anywheres from three to 10 years. I think we had one that was 10 years. So we can get you a list and get you updated so you can see where we're at with those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions about C1 or C2 before we jump? Okay. Going to go now to our elected leadership section. So again, I'm going to do these in pairs because again, there's compendium pages for these sections. So again, you'll notice that C3 and C4 are the same, just one has the previous histories numbers and C4 has the detailed description of the proposed numbers. So again, we'll partner these pages. Are there any questions or comments about these pages or ideas even? Yes, Counsel Barry?
I don't know if this is exactly where it should be, but I did bring up, and I will be probably bringing this up to counsel that postage. I know it's a very small line item, but I kind of think we need to move into the 21st century a little bit and maybe start making it where we're not taking that cost on to send things out to people. I understand that there are statutes where we have to, like with certain things, but like packets that we send to different boards and different things, maybe cutting that down. I don't propose that we cut this out of the budget because we don't know how that will go, but I think that's something we could look at.
Thank you. Are you thinking an alternative would be electronic distribution?
I think electronic as well as if somebody wants a physical packet, they pick it up.
They pick it up rather than mail. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, moving on. C5 and C6 go together. This is on civic promotion under elected leadership. Oh, I should state, if you do have a question about a specific line item, please just name the account number and the description so we know. I should have said that earlier. My apologies. All right, seeing none. Keep going. We just did C7 and C8, but again, would love ideas if folks have it after hearing our, from our community support organizations. Any ideas folks have or want to share or questions they might have at this point about this, these two pages since we just spent about two hours on them? Counsel Pepin and then Counsel Parity-Cotanzaro?
I'm sorry. Ever since I keep looking at coast bus being in, in community support, I kind of like feel like, you know, our trash services is basically a funded item that goes outside. This amount coming in, coming into community services, I mean, they don't, I mean, their, their request is way beyond, all of them all totaled up. I'm, I just like, I've always thought this doesn't belong in community support. I think it ought to be somewhere else in a line item. I don't, don't know where, but we have outside contractor, contracts and stuff like this. I do think we need to discuss this and stuff like this, but Redd's always said, when I was on that board and stuff like that, he feels like he's the gorilla in the room and he is. I, I, I don't know. I look at, you know, waste management is, is off the thing. I mean, they're like an outside contract. Like I say, I do believe that they, we need to question them and whatever. I, I just don't know where else it could be put, but I, I just don't feel that it's in a proper place. That's just my, my two cents in the whole thing. This is my last budget, so I probably won't have nothing to complain about next time.
No, you bring up something I haven't been thinking a lot about too, Counsel Pepin, which is, and it started when we funded the additional funds through our municipal transportation fund. I'm just wondering if that is a better location overall for this particular line item? And I'm curious how much is in that municipal transportation fund and if there would be flexibility to pay for some, if not all, of this in that section? I'm just curious if we could, if I could turn that over to maybe city manager to help me with?
I'd have to turn to Scott on how much is left. Do you have a exact figure or?
Yeah, there's currently about 42,000 in the municipal and transportation fund and we add on average about 5,000 a month. So if you looked at it annually, it'd be 60,000 bucks a year, give or take.
Okay. Thank you.
And those funds come from where again?
They're usually from car registration, I believe.
Yes. No, I'm familiar. I just.
Oh, so the public, yeah.
There's, there's a surcharge on the motor vehicle registrations of $5 that, that, that $5 then goes into that fund.
Perfect.
Thank you. And as of right now, I can't remember off the top of my head, what else do we utilize that fund for? Do we have any set things that come out every year from that fund or is it more at councils as well?
At councils as well. We've used it for, I think sidewalks or?
We've used it for roads, we've used it for sidewalks. This last time was the first time we've used it for a coast. But, but yeah, the city council has to take action to actually utilize those funds. You're the agents to expend. It's like a capital reserve fund, so it can only be used when the city council takes action to use it. And it can only be used for specific purposes. There's kind of a range, but it deals basically with transportation, obviously, issues.
Appreciate that. My last question is then, before I'll turn it over, sorry, everybody. The fees that we assess to motor vehicles, are those set at the state level or do we have sole discretion over the amounts that we would charge?
It's set at the state level to a maximum of $5.
Gotcha.
It was a movement to try to increase it, I think, to 10, but that gets, I think it was vetoed by the governor, actually.
Gotcha. Okay.
Several years ago. And we're at the maximum of five.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, Counsel Parity-Cotanzaro, I believe you were next.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make a note that the chamber also requested, put in a request. I know it came in after this was printed, but just for our discussion, that will come up when we do those. So I'm just writing on my chamber requested 40,000, so that, that's on this page when we do that.
Yeah, I want to clarify, the request that they were asking in terms of community support funding was 10. They did apply for a separate MOU with the city that was 40.
Oh, that was separate? Okay.
I, I think, I'll turn it over to city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they could both go in this section, but I'll leave it to you.
I, I wouldn't recommend they both go in that section. The 10K would go in this section. The MOU would be another discussion altogether and we would place it.
I would likely, I bet you that, my own personal preference, that MOU, I would like to see go through committee at the committee level if it were to be approved also, just because it's contracted services and things like that.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions about community support section or comments? Counsel Gibson?
Yeah, could you clarify what MOU is to the general public?
Memorandum of Understanding. It's essentially a contract with the city to do specific work outlined within that memorandum.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else on C7, C8? Okay, we're going to jump then. Going to city management, that section. This is now C9, which is partnered with C10. Questions from council? I had one for the city manager. It was the reduction of the vehicle allowance by $500. Was this due to the uncertainty with the potential new manager's contract?
Exactly.
Perfect. Thank you. That was what I figured. Yes, Counsel Vincent?
Not sure what section this falls under, but I know we've taken quite an increase on municipal insurance the past couple of years. I want to know when we start to question that. There is another, correct me if I'm wrong, there is another service here in the state that we can actually go through. I know, what's the name of the company that we use right now for municipal insurance? I'm sorry. Primex. I mean, that's, that's increased quite a bit in the last couple of years. I'm sure that they've all kind of increased, but isn't there another company that we can get quotes from? Isn't there, isn't there something else we can get quote from? We get quotes for everything, but we just take for granted or whatever it may be, maybe it's, maybe they, maybe they're letting us know across the board what the other company does, but just to stay, you know, transparent, I guess, and non-transparent, to keep a idea. What section is that going to fall under? And I don't mean to jump around.
It's throughout the budget.
Right. So I guess I'll ask the, I'll ask the question now. Are we interested in getting another proposal to keep the current insurance real, so to speak?
Is that for me?
That's a question for, a question for the city manager. Or have you already done that?
No, there's very few communities that I'm aware of. Maybe Scott can chime in too, but I wouldn't recommend moving away from Primex.
And not to beat a dead horse, price-wise, coverage-wise, your thoughts? Both?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, there's, so I'm asking, why would you not want to look at another company?
I don't think you'd be able to get, I don't know for certain unless we went out and researched it and put out a bid. I'm not sure we could get the same kind of coverage across the board, but I don't know. Scott, do you have any information that you could share?
Well, there's not another pooled risk company out there that I'm aware of that would do that. So there used to be two when New Hampshire Municipal Association did it and Primex, but they don't offer that anymore. They just do the health trust, the health side of it. So the only thing I would be aware of doing is just going out to bid and if there are any private insurers out there that were inclined to bid on that service and then see what the comparison would be.
And my thoughts on this is because, while it's the only gig in town, so to speak, it's a nonprofit, if I'm correct. It's a nonprofit insurance company. And where their profits come from, or where it increases is obviously by increasing insurance as a general, which is disasters across the United States, which causes insurance to go up. But when you're a nonprofit, you have a pool of money left that can be given to their employees, so to speak. So it's a really, it's kind of like, it's kind of like, I guess, goodwill. It's a nonprofit. You can go there, nonprofit. They write off non prophecy all the time. However, the CEO can take a half a million dollar increase and pay. So. So there's some kinda questions there. I'm just trying to keep the company honest. If there's no one else to go to, then I guess we have no choice, we have to burden the cost. But in today's society, where we have options, it would be nice, but apparently, if we don't have an option, you know, I'm just looking for savings for the city. I'm not saying that the company's bad, it's just that these insurance companies, it never stops, it never stops, and all of us in our constituents face the burden of that.
Thank you. Counselor Pepin?
Yeah, I, I remember back when we had two companies, when I first got on the city council and stuff like this, and I think insurance companies will ensure where they think they're gonna make money and where they're not gonna make money, and it kinda like limits the pool of what you have. I think the municipalities kind of like got together and kinda like formed Primex in a roundabout way to suit all the needs that the cities need, because insurance companies will specialize in certain things and certain things they won't, where they think they may be losing money. If I'm not mistaken, Primex has also given us back some money in the revenues in the past years back, if I'm not mistaking. That's the reason why they're nonprofit, so they go by what they pay out and what they take in, and then whatever's not utilized, they end up giving it back to municipalities. I don't know of any other insurance company that does that, so that's just my, my feel on it.
Thank you. Yeah, I will add too that the process for changing would be a much longer, probably be more extensive process than we would have time to do in advance of passing this budget. It, I'm not saying it can't be done, but I think that if you're looking for budgetary savings for this particular budget, I don't think it's accomplishable before we would need to pass it. Does that mean we still can't go through that process, send it to committees, have people put the bids out and do that, and then maybe see savings in the long term? Absolutely. I think in terms of like actually changing numbers in this budget to hit certain, you know, thresholds, I don't know if we can do that before we need to get this passed.
And if I may just add.
Absolutely.
If I just may, and that's all fine, in the past two years, correct me if I'm wrong, it's almost been over a 20% increase. One year was 14.5, and I think this year is 8.5. I could be wrong in the numbers, but I'm somewhere close, I know I am. I just wish I could have that increase in my pay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions about C9 or C10? Alright, we'll go to now C11 and C12. This is city management administration section, questions about this, these two pages. And if I'm going too fast, please let me know, but it seems like nobody does. We're gonna jump now to our next section, which is finance administration. First section, or first pages, excuse me, are C13 and C14, they go together. Questions about this? Gonna keep going. C15, C16. This is now city clerk's office. Keep going. We got C17, C18, this is elections. Yes, sir.
I did have a question, but it was answered at the finance committee. I was looking at 44101, you know, office supplies, and it went up to $5,000, and if I remember right, it was something like 750 last year. They did give me an answer. I guess our machines are pretty well needed to be replaced, and I just, the city manager would like to comment.
Absolutely, city manager.
Yeah, those are for the new election boots. What you have on the agenda is for the grants for the new machines, that's, that'll be first reading. We, we have a certain amount of money, I can't remember the figures off the top of my head, it might be 17,000 or something, for the, for new machines, because our old, our current machines cannot be serviced anymore. So we're looking to get five new machines, I believe it is, and that's on your agenda for Monday night, except the grant and to purchase those new machines as recommended by the finance committee.
Thank you.
And a question?
Yes, we got Counselor Vincent and then Gibson.
Is that, does the state assist us in any funding on that?
Not for the boots that are in our, our proposed budget, but for the machines, they are.
Thank you.
Counselor Gibson?
Just a question of curiosity, what happens to the old machines?
I don't know that we could put them on gov deals, but.
I don't know there's any value in them, but we'll just have the new company take them away.
Okay.
Okay.
So scrap them?
In the museum.
Yeah. Thank you, good question. Other questions, comments about C17, C18 elections? Alright, brings us to C19, C20, this is the tax collector section. Yep, alright, nobody? Keep going. C21, C22, human services section. Alright, I will note that some of this funds, the funds that are in this section have been used, I believe, in the past for our Willand Warming Center. Just wanna be clear that we have not yet determined what next year will look like, so just wanted to make that known. We're going with previous year's budget numbers. Other questions? Okay, moving on. C23, 24, 25, 26 are all one section, which is the library. Counselor Pepin?
I noticed that there was a big increase on 47702, 03, and 04. There's quite an increase in such a line item, you went from $4,000 to $6,000 on each line. I know there's an explanation. When I read it.
Did you get your mic on?
Oh, can you, yeah, turn your mic on, ready? The mic.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'll go back to where I was on 47702, 703, 704. Basically, they've all gone up, almost $2,000 on each line item in state.
Just, they were, for a couple different reasons. Some is just based on the demand that they're seeing over there, so there, there's just a larger demand for children's books, children's activities, things of that nature. So that has been increased to meet that. As you'll notice, the audio visual has gone down because the demand for that has subsided a little bit. There doesn't seem, they don't have the need for as much materials for that. The public programmings, that was just, that was increased just simply because they're trying to offer more programming. So what we've done is, over the years, is we've just tried to slowly implement more money there to allow for more programming, as opposed to try to do it all in one year. So that's really just a conscious effort to increase the programming that the library can offer to the public. So a lot of the speakers, a lot of the activities that they do are paid for. It costs money to provide those, so that was just a conscious effort to try to increase the ability to offer more programming.
Okay. Other comments or questions about this section, the library? Alrighty, alright, moving on. Brings us to C27 and 28, this is assessing.
Your honor?
Yes.
I would just point out, I, I think most of you know, hopefully all of you are aware that Corcoran Consulting Services are contracted assessor for the last 20-plus years. They've gone out of business, so we were lucky enough to advertise for a full-time assessor, so way back in the day when I first started here, we did have an assessor. We went to contracted services, now we're going back to having an in-house assessor available 40 hours a week. So that's why you see some changes in the contracted service line and so forth, and increase in the full-time salaries.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Goodwin?
Yes, thank you. And what is the budgetary impact of that switch from contracted services to an in-house position?
City manager or finance director, Smith?
It ended up being, I mean, obviously you can see the entire budget went up about 50,000, and that was mainly based on that, because the, between the salaries and wages, but now we're offering benefits. The contract total for cycles and just assessing services usually ranged between 100 and 110,000. The contract assessor salaries, 91, and then once you roll in benefits, you're probably another 30% on top of that.
So just out of curiosity, is there, did we shop around for other contracted services to compare costs for that in-house role, and maybe we could speak to the value of having an in-house assessor? I'm just wondering why, you know, trying to justify why we'd pay a premium for in-house versus a contracted role?
Yeah, there was, there was very difficult, there aren't a lot of contractors out there. We weren't attracting any contractors that wanted to come in and provide us the services that we needed. They're all just spread way too thin, so we had the opportunity for this one particular assessor that had worked for Corcoran to come in onboard and be our chief assessor. I think some of the benefit is the fact that now, instead of having a, an assessor in-house one day a week, he's here five days a week. So I think at least from a customer service perspective, they'll have more of an opportunity to meet and interact with the assessor than we do under the contract assessor, where they're here only once a week.
City manager?
Yeah, I would just add, I don't have an exact number, but this had to affect at least 10 communities. Several of them went out to bid and got no luck, so we researched contacting other municipalities. Now several of them are moving towards trying to bring aboard a, an assessor as a staff, in a staff-level position. So it's a phenomenon that, that really affected quite a few communities in the state.
Thank you. Counselor Goodwin, you're still working.
Thank you. That is good insight, thank you both. I wonder, certainly a higher level of service is great, and I think it's interesting that we're going from a contracted service that's, we're getting service one day a week to five days a week. That's a, you know, 400, 500% increase in terms of hours that an assessor is available. I'm just, I guess I question whether or not our community needs that amount of time for the assessor, or what other roles the assessor is conducting. And I know we've had conversations before about parking enforcement and other responsibilities that we may share with neighboring communities, and given the insight that the manager just provided us, I wonder if there might be an opportunity to work with one of those communities to share an assessor, so we get them for halftime and they get them for halftime. Just putting that out there as a possible expense saving option.
Thank you. City manager, you have any, any thoughts? You don't have to, I was just curious if you wanted to add anything. Thank you. One question I had, and just you brought it up, I imagine since they came from Corcoran, they must have had a familiarity with our community before, and thus probably made it an easier transition.
Yeah, I think that's a fair observation.
Other questions? Counselor Parity Katzenzera?
Yeah, just a quick one. I imagine this is due to hiring in instead of contracting out, but line 45706, since it went down to zero, there's not like a little detail note, so I just don't know what that is. Assessing, revale, cycle, what is that line?
City manager, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's exactly that. That line item, that was the portion of the contract where they would do cycled inspections, so they actually inspect a quarter, 20%, but a quarter of the properties each year over four years, and then the fifth year is the actual revale. The contract, our employee, our chief assessor will do that service now as part of his role.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Alright, we're gonna move on to development services section of the budget. Yes, go ahead, Counselor Gibson, you're good. Still on the assessing section?
Yes.
Okay.
If we're gonna have a full-time assessor, would it be practical to start doing reappraisals on a more regular basis, or would that just be too involved?
City manager?
The finance committee did take up that issue at one of their meetings over the last couple of months, and the consensus was not to do a full revaluation for the sake of discussion every two years because of the tax cap issue that we ran into, where we won't be able to use construction costs, and it caused a lot of angst in regards to not being able to increase the budget and having to swallow increases, like for salaries and so forth. We're doing, we, we had to do encycled inspections, that was just talked about.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Alright, any others related to the assessing section? Okay. Again, now to development services, that is C29 and C30. Yep, go ahead, Counselor Vincent.
So I, I see, thank you, first of all. 41100, this never-ending creeping up dental costs. Well, it says health and dental. Is it health or is it dental? Or is it both? How is that run?
It, it's both health and dental. Dental's a very small portion of that cost, it's really the health insurance.
So you can see, it's got a, it's got a history of $10,000 every year. What is that, how many people does that cover? Three. What do I say about an increase like that? A lot, thank you.
Other questions coming? Counselor Barry?
I know I mentioned this earlier, but I wanted to just make a note of, for, it's 44500 postage. This was the line item that kinda came to mind for me when I saw it, was the postage around these. I know there are large packets for our planners, for our planning board and all of that, but this was the line item that stuck out the most to me, and I was like, wait, why? So just for other councilors to be aware of why I was bringing that up earlier.
Yeah, thank you. City manager?
Just to go back to the, the health and dental, that's not Primex, of course, that's the health trust.
No, I, I get that, thank you.
Sometimes, not, not necessarily in this instance, but sometimes people will move from a single plan to a family plan.
I get that.
So there's fluctuations in each department sometimes in regards to those types of issues.
Thank you for that.
Other questions about the planning section? Yes, Counselor Goodwin?
I should know this, but I don't. What, what percent of health insurance does the city cover for its employees?
City manager?
85%.
Great, thank you.
Other ideas, comments? Okay, oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Parity Katzenzera.
Yeah, just wanted a little bit more information on the smart gov permitting. It says software year two, but it looks like this is really the first year that we're jumping up like 20K for that. Just, what is that? Is that a one-time?
What account number?
Oh, sorry. 47200, the very last line item. It went up from 1,000 to 21,000, so it says 20,519 is for a permitting software, so just wondering if that's a new annual software or a one-time thing?
That's, that's something we launched this year that's new, so that people can go online and get their permitting through the software.
Yeah, the, the first year, excuse me, sorry, first year plus the implementation. They're implementing it now, we pay through ARPA, so the council took, and we use the ARPA funds to do that. That started a year ago, I'm gonna guess, so this would be just year two of that service agreement.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
So that is what we bought for a program that cost 34,000 last year? Is that what we're talking about here?
It, yeah, it was over 40, actually.
I'm sorry, it was over 40. And then I had asked a question last year, there was gonna be maintenance, whatever they call it, a never-ending, a never-ending bill, so to speak. There was gonna be maintenance, whatever they call it, a never-ending, a never-ending bill, so to speak.
That's what happens with the software. That's right.
No, I get it.
As long as we use it.
I get it.
You're gonna have that fee.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Other questions on this section? Everyone, but not question, comment, but let others go first. I was thinking, one of the things I'm just throwing out there is like software like this may fall under our cable fund, or at least like might be well-suited for using those funds for something like this. Just throwing it out there. Brings up, you know, we have, we have not got to that section of the budget, but it seems as if Cable Fund, I think, has enough funds for something like that if that were the appetite of the council to pay for some expense like this with a fund like that. Other thoughts, questions? Okay, we will continue to Economic Development, which is page C thirty-one and C thirty-two. Yes, Councilor Goodwin.
I know this is not the budget year to bring this up, but, you know, it's my sincere hope that in the future we can put more prioritization to this budget category. The fact that we have two thousand dollars allocated to economic development in a city that consistently talks about our ongoing revitalization efforts of the downtown, the desire to diversify our tax base, et cetera, et cetera. It just feels like, you know, where we allocate our budget demonstrates our priorities. And I think we spend a lot more time talking about economic development than we do funding it. And I know there's a lot of competing priorities, but it's just disheartening how light this section is. And just, you know, in light of the budget challenges this year, I don't think there's much we can do about it, but just wanted to state that.
Other questions, comments?
Could the councilor please give me an example of what the funding would go for, please?
Yeah, I think, I would love to see a part-time or full-time position of someone that worked in this role to take on that work. I know we've had that in the past to varying degrees of success. You know, I think that if you want to get really aggressive, which I would certainly advocate for, I think having some sort of program in place where the city could start, you know, essentially taking underutilized or vacant properties to help reposition them in the downtown. You know, unpopular opinion, but the Summersworth Plaza as an opportunity for revitalization in the downtown, it's not gonna go anywhere without leadership from the city. There's a lot of vacant storefronts down there. It was, it's my opinion, and the City of Rochester is a good example of a local municipality doing this, that the city really needs to take leadership and acquire vacant properties, collect them, essentially make an assemblage, and then have a master plan and a redevelopment process to get that process going. There's just too many private actors and a shatterbelt of different ownership where it's not gonna happen organically. And again, that is a big undertaking. But I think we, you know, having an economic development person that can sort of spearhead a strategy around that, and then building a strategy like that into our budget expectations, I think is the only way that we're gonna see meaningful change in some parts of town.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments about C thirty-one and C thirty-two? Yes, Councilor Barry?
Just to kind of play on what was being said there. I've also seen other communities, well, they'll fund like a program where they'll give money towards certain updates. I can't remember if Summersworth has done that in the past with, like, I think we did with the Main Street, where, oh, we're gonna do these updates. If you also want to do updates, we'll help fund that to make things better. That could also be another one. Again, I agree. I don't think it's this year, but that would be also another one where it's kind of a, we're helping the neighbors do that who might not do it otherwise.
Thank you. Other comments, ideas, questions? Okay, we're gonna continue to Code Enforcement, C thirty-three and C thirty-four. All righty, moving on. We're doing Recreation, which is C thirty-five, C thirty-six, C thirty-seven, and C thirty-eight. Yes, Councilor Vincent.
Account number forty-one, one zero zero. Again, health and dental. This time, it went down about eleven thousand dollars. What was the decrease? Did we lose an employee? We lost an employee, right?
Correct, I'm wrong.
Well, we just, we had a replacement employee. So the person that was here had a two-person. The new employee's got just a single plan.
Thank you. See, I just don't ask on increases.
Councilor Parry, Caton Zero?
Yeah, I know that the Rec Department does bring in some revenue, and I don't know if I missed that detail or if it's just not detailed. But do we have that number? And if so, can you direct me to which page that's on?
Yeah, it's buried in what we have, we call charges from departments. We budget around eighty-five for that, and it's ramping up. Once COVID hit, it was down a lot, but we usually are taking in around sixty thousand dollars between all the programs that they offer.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, comments, ideas? Okay. That brings us to City Hall, which is C thirty-nine, C forty. Yes, Councilor Barry?
It's more of a question. And again, I don't think I'm looking for it to be this year, but electricity, I know we were looking to do like solar panels on other parts of the city, but have we ever considered or looked into maybe doing solar panels on some of our municipal buildings specifically to help with some of these costs? It's just more of, it came to mind when I was reviewing this budget. I know, again, I'm not gonna say it's this year, but I also know at some point there were grants or other things to go that way. And I was just curious, more for discussion, not to necessarily change what our budget's gonna be, because, right, we can't just put a solar panel out of thin air and have it start generating some cost savings. But it was just something that came to my mind.
City Manager, Director Smith? I think it is a great idea, maybe, for a committee to start looking into. In future years down the road, we could probably make something like that happen. I know we do have the solar farm, hopefully, at some point soon, going in at the Superfund site on Blackwater Road. And that should have some sort of cost sharing with the city, just to help, if I'm not mistaken. Other questions on C thirty-nine, C forty? Continue on. Public Safety section. We'll start with Police Admin, which is C forty-one, C forty-two, C forty-three, C forty-four, and C forty-five, excuse me. Chunk, Police Admin. Since this is a long one, I'll give you a little bit more time. All right, we'll continue. That brings us to Patrol, which is C forty-six, C forty-seven, and C forty-eight. Yes, City Manager?
Just in case you don't remember from last year, in this current budget, for three police, full-time sworn police officer positions, there's only, I only proposed a budget for six months. Due to the history, we've never been fully staffed with our patrol officers. Over the last decade-plus that I've been here, there's only been maybe one or two instances where we might have been fully staffed for like six months or something like that. So last year and this year, I think, we were down two to three people. Right now, we're down four. But it's not cutting a position. So if the Police Department is successful in recruiting, you know, we'll fill those positions, even though they funded for six. So there may be some overspending in the salaries. So I just wanted to point that out and underscore it. So this current budget and that current budget, that's the strategy.
I got a comment.
Yeah, if you, Councilor Goodwin, then.
Just, so just to clarify, what is budgeted is what we anticipate to be the number of employed people, even though they are approved to hire additional people if they can find them? Thank you.
Councilor Vincent?
So if I'm understanding this right, if they fully get their people, they're not gonna have to come back for appropriation, correct?
I wouldn't think so, but it would be handled in a transfer ordinance if that was the case.
Right, 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 right.
The way things are this day and age, you know, it's a little bit of a gamble, but, you know, it's been this way for a decade-plus.
Right. I'm in full support of your judgment. Thank you.
Other questions, ideas, concerns? Okay, cool. We'll move on. Brings us to the Investigations Unit, which is C forty-nine and C fifty. Seeing none. We'll go to Police Support, which is C fifty-one, C fifty-two, and C fifty-three. Yes, Councilor Pepin?
Forty-two, twenty-two. It went from eleven thousand to forty thousand. I know it's part-time, and I know there was a dispatcher thing in there, increase, but I tried to, I thought we had the part-time position in the last budget, and I'm a little confused about the figure difference.
First of all, just in the backup, there's a typo. Because it just says part-time custodian. That money's not just for the part-time custodian. It's also a part-time dispatcher. I think it was the council or the Public Safety Committee took action because we budgeted money for a part-time police officer last year that we were unable to attract, and they needed more help in dispatch. So that's, so that's what they're doing, is they're hiring a part-time dispatcher.
So is that just like a line transfer from one account to the other?
Just moved it from patrol, where it would have been a police officer.
Now I understand. Okay, thank you.
To support where it's a dispatcher.
Thank you. That was one of my questions as well. Other questions, comments, ideas? Okay, continue on. Brings us to Traffic, which is C fifty-four and C fifty-five. Okay, keep going. Oh, go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, just wondering, I know we've talked about it a couple times, but have we talked with Berwick at all about splitting a person for parking enforcement?
City Manager?
No.
Okay. Well, an idea is to do that in the future because I think, I know that some of the hours that we wanted the parking officer to cover, to shift those, would be easier to cover if we had a full-time person.
I do have a comment on that.
Yep, Councilor Vincent?
I'm not sure what the, and maybe the, I'm sure the police chief knows, the legality of taking an officer from Maine and bringing him over to New Hampshire and vice versa. It's just totally different laws, I guess. I don't know. I just, I just think that's a little out of the box too far, but maybe I'm wrong.
Any of us?
Don't get me wrong, I'm all for savings.
Sure.
We're gonna have a dual officer, one from Maine and one from New Hampshire, to cover both states. What's the legality of that, you know? Just a question. Maybe it's fine. I don't know.
I'll turn it back over to Councilor Parry, Caton Zero, and then Councilor Gibson.
Yeah, I know it's something that we had discussed before, and it's, you know, it's not like it's a police officer, so there's a bunch of certifications that differ from state to state. So it would be, in my view, very similar to sharing any type of employee. And I know it's certainly been done, so.
Councilor Gibson?
That was gonna be my question. Where is it, where it's traffic enforcement? Are they sworn, therefore you get into the certification issue? If not?
Great questions. I love, I love that we all have these phenomenal ideas, too. I think write them down, save them. We are gonna do a workshop with the new city manager once they are official. So I think these would be really great things for planning for future budgets, absolutely. Other questions or comments about Traffic section? Okay. We'll move on to Prosecution, C fifty-six and C fifty-seven. Yeah, Councilor Barry?
I just had a weird one, and I forgot I even had it. I probably should have asked earlier. But we have a cleaning service closed for our prosecutor. Is that because they require a certain uniform in the court system? Or I was just curious around, oh, it is, they're suits. Okay.
I assume that's, is that a contracted item? Yes.
I have a question on Prosecution.
Yes, Councilor Vincent?
I look at forty-five, seven hundred, Contracted Services. And my question is, I know with prosecution, we try to do prosecution in-house. However, it takes an attorney sometimes. Is that what that is, the contractor services and attorney cost?
Yeah, that's been in there for decades. We used to have Tom Dunnington, quite frankly. Sadly, he passed away recently. But he had retired from our department. He was servicing several departments, and we have a new prosecutor, Diane Dubois or Dubay or Dubay or something like that. And that's for her services.
And I was, thank you for that. And I was familiar, I just wasn't sure if it was under the Contractor Services. Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, comments, ideas? Okay, moving on. Brings us to our Fire Administration section, which is C fifty-eight, C fifty-nine, and C sixty. Yes, Councilor Pepin? We are not. That's next. My apologies. Soon, though. Yes, Councilor Gibson?
I must not have been looking very closely, but do we have water and sewer charges to each department?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, comments about Fire Admin? All right, we will jump to Fire Fighting, which is C sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four. Councilor Pepin, you are recognized?
Yes, thank you. C sixty-one, forty-four, eight hundred. Clothing, I see that it's down here as protective clothing. Is that because of the changes in PDF in the bunker gears or whatever? I mean, it's gone from, it's gone from eighteen thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. I guess, is there a major change? I mean, usually appropriated a year, and it keeps going up and up.
City Manager?
If the fire chief could give the council some information on that, I appreciate it.
Morning.
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 Sorry to put you on a carpet here.
It's only a matter of time. All right, yeah, so the increase in that line item is due to a shift in ensuring that firefighters maintain both their in-service gear and a backup set of gear. There's a push in cancer prevention in the fire service. So when they are laundering their equipment after it's been contaminated, they need backup gear to get back in. So we've shifted to a, each firefighter on the roster, three sets of gear per year to ensure that we maintain compliance of the ten-year replacements.
I guess my question is, are we looking at this price probably and probably increasing every year? Is this, is this a one-time shot of getting us up there or what?
So with anything, cost of this stuff goes up. So I can't give you a solid number on what those costs are gonna be. I can tell you that there is a shift in, with PFAS in our gear. I can tell you that there is a shift in, with PFAS in our gear. Companies have not been able to develop anything that they can put to market yet, so if that requirement does come, you could see significant cost.
Okay. If I may, I got another line item, forty-seven, five-hundred. I know it's basically maintenance aerial apparatus, self-contained breathing apparatus or whatever, but that's another one that almost doubled in price from eight thousand to fourteen thousand. I guess I ask this, I've been out for a while or whatever, is some of this stuff yearly, or is some of this stuff going to be annually or whatever, like aerial testing? I don't know if that has to be done every year or, or whatever. Can you give me a little insight on that?
So this is, what, I'm sorry, what?
Four-seven, five-zero-zero, operating equipment maintenance.
Maybe we can get a definition of what that is.
That's right. It basically tells you on-
C-64. C-64 gives you a breakdown.
C-64 gives you an explanation.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you. I knew it was somewhere, I couldn't find it.
Chief, are you able to find the line item?
Yes, yes.
C-64. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So the, this line item is to, so this does our ground ladders, our pump maintenance, aerial certification, which is required. We have upgraded with the new building. We have a new compressor to fill up firefighting cylinders. There's an annual maintenance cost to that. The increase to required annual inspections of, for flow testing for the bottles, and then air compressor quarterly testing. The increase to this is for third-party hose testing. This is the only item of required testing annually that we do not complete via third-party. It's always been in-house. And we are one of the only departments in the area that continue to maintain in-house. The reason that we are proposing this, it decreases the safety part of, as far as injuries on the firefighter and downtime due to that. It decreases the possibility of our equipment failing due to the high pressure of running the equipment for the prolonged period of time. And it allows for documentation to be better in place through the company, so it removes that.
If I may.
Absolutely.
Does aerial testing and ladder testing and pump testing, does that have to be done every year now?
That is correct.
I got a follow-up.
Is it related to this item?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Actually-
Counsel Perdik and Zero.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no.
My question was on the structural firefighting gear. What's the cost of that now? You have an idea on that?
Yes, I can get you a number.
It just needs to be a ballpark, too.
I believe it's currently at sixty-two hundred dollars.
Wow.
That's for helmet to boot.
It used to be thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-four hundred. Wow. Nothing's going down. Thank you, Chief.
Counsel Perdik and Zero.
I just missed a word when you were talking about the third-party something testing. I missed what that-
Hose testing.
Hose, okay, thank you.
Counsel Goodman.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on the clothing discussion, to make sure I understand. So in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, it was a six-hundred-dollar line item. Last year, it was eighteen, eighteen thousand. This year, it's, you know, essentially twenty-six thousand, and that is reflecting cancer protocol, so you, we are purchasing more, more clothing, more compliant clothing for, for staff, so that they can cycle through to make sure they always have clean clothes. So that's what the premium is, is just, we're essentially buying more clothing to make sure that they have clean clothes.
Sort of, but we have fallen out of a replacement program, so NFPA requires gear to be replaced every ten years. We have fallen out of that, and the previous year's line item did not cover the full replacement of that, so we're shifting back in hopes of maintaining three sets of gear per year with the thought that the set that they wear every day is a five-year, and their replacement gear, in the event that they're contaminated, is still within that ten-year compliance.
So to parse out, because I couldn't really get the, what, managing future expectation here to Counsel Peppin's point, is this, essentially is this like fleet maintenance now? Are we, are we, would you anticipate that we're going to see something in the twenty-six-thousand-dollar range with escalation over time every year, because we've implemented a strategy to constantly cycle through, or is it going to be lumpier than that, because we're investing this year, next year, we won't need as much? I'm just trying to get a sense of-
Yeah, so we've developed a list of ensuring that they stay in cycle. Again, I can't speak on any cost increase on the thing.
Yeah, I know, I can't speak to the cost increase.
I could anticipate it going up.
So again, I'm not asking, I know that the cost, the cost of everything goes up over time, so that's not my question. My question is, are we anticipating to incur sort of, just scope-wise, the same amount of replacement of clothing?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. So this is a, more or less a fixed expense at this point, that will fluctuate as code changes and as costs in the market change?
Correct.
Okay. And then just flagging what I think I heard, and I've heard elsewhere, is that I think a lot of the flame retardant clothing uses PFAS, right? And they're trying to figure out a way to get that out of the safety gear?
That is correct.
Okay, and so we don't know the cost implications of what that new technology will be, if and when it is implemented?
Correct.
Thank you.
A question on the clothing line item, too. Is in part, and this might be more for a city manager, is in part that jump from the six-hundred to the eighteen thousand, is that due to like a new union contract agreement?
No.
No, has nothing to do with that. It's just purely us deciding to take on responsibility of replacement more frequently due to our, you know, being out of the ten-year window.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I'm sorry, but just to clarify, there's a typo in the book that I didn't notice. We actually spent thirty-seven thousand dollars on that clothing, which was the protective clothing uniform. The five-seventy-eight is what was spent out of the miscellaneous supplies line item, so those numbers got traded.
Ah.
So I apologize for that.
That makes sense.
And it was thirty-seven, because we had a carryover from the prior year that was held over, but we've been spending between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars a year on replacing uniforms as it is.
Can you give me the numbers again, the account numbers, please?
So four-four-eight-zero-zero clothing, and the, in the column twenty-three, twenty-four, it says, we said, says we spent five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. That is a typo. The line below it, thirty-seven thousand, four ninety-four, should be on that line. Those two lines were flipped.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, that was important clarification.
I mean, and that, I think, is comforting to know, you know, we're just seeing, you know, without that clarification, we're just seeing a six-hundred-dollar budget line item grow to twenty-six thousand dollars in two years, and we're like, wow, that's, you know, a meaningful change, whereas if this isn't something that is ongoing, it's a little less jarring. So thank you for that clarification.
Gotcha. Thank you. Counsel Gibson.
This is just an informational question, really.
Counsel Gibson, please.
The regular turnout gear is supposed to protect against most things, correct? What is different for the PFDs, is that what they're called?
The PFAS? Yeah, so it's a, it's a chemical that's put into protective clothing, it's put into upholsterys, it's everywhere. And there's a push to remove that, because it is a known cancer-causing chemical. And it's in our inner shells, and it's in our outer shells. As, as we sweat, as things happen in a fire, that's how it enters our bodies.
Okay, so the big issue is, is that they need to find some sort of process that will provide the same level of protection?
Correct. And be certified. Correct.
Other questions, comments, ideas? All right, we are going to move forward to, let's see, EMS Support, which is C-65 and C-66. Thank you, Chief. I think they're all set. Any questions on this? Again, just for clarity's sake, this is a new item, due to contracted agreement that went through finance, I believe, and both council, for contracting with Stewart's Ambulance to provide financial support for the services that they provide to the city of sixty-five thousand dollars. We have seen this before. Okay, seeing none. We will jump to Public Works section, gives us Public Works Administration, which is C-67, C-68, C-69, C-70. That's that, yeah, all the way up to C-70. We will continue. We'll go to Street Maintenance, which is C-71 and C-72. Any ideas, questions, comments on this section? Counsel Goodman, is that a hand or no?
It is.
No. If you have an idea, it's always good to share. Counsel Barry is going to go first, though. Go ahead, Counsel Barry.
It's just a, more of a general question, just for informational purpose. For nine, four-nine-one-oh-two and four-nine-one-oh-four, these are all things that are already like on a planned schedule, and that this is just keeping with those plans, correct?
Yeah, yeah, both those items show up in the capital improvement program, exactly. And then they flow through into the budget.
And then, yeah, we typically will go and contract out for certain streets based on the amount that we've allocated.
Right, I just wanted, for those listening at home and following along, I know they're large items, right, but we do put out a CIP, you know, for those, why we're putting them in certain years and different things, so I just, for clarification.
City Manager.
Yeah, just to remind folks also that if we come under budget on a particular road resurfacing project, that money is kept. It's capital money that rolls over into the next year, so we have more than nine-hundred thousand available now for some of our projects.
Got you. Thank you. Good clarification. Other questions, comments, ideas? All right, moving on. Snow removal, C-73, C-74.
So are we, are we anticipating, when we do snow, we talk about snow removal here. There's a lot of different categories with salt and sand and so forth. Do we typically, every year, do we, do we, I know sometimes we have to call for more money, but how are we doing this year on that? Are we, are we within, we're close, right?
In salt and sand, you're talking about?
With the whole, the whole budget on that.
It's, it's close, it's tight, but we're still within budget, yeah.
And, and every year, we, we, we do very well, correct, with it?
We have the past few years, probably the past three, we, I mean, it's been a while, but we have had difficult years where we really had to address it as the budget went on, but this year, they've, so far, unless something happens, we're within budget.
Right. Thank you.
No more snow, please. Question I have is, does the salt and sand line item also roll over, similar to the roads item?
No.
No, it does not. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, we'll continue. Street lighting, C-75 and C-76. All right, easy enough, keep going. Equipment maintenance, C-77 and C-78. All right, keep going. Okay, keep going. C-81, C-82, and C-83 are all buildings and grounds. Questions, comments, ideas? Yes, Counsel Vincent.
The contracted services on forty-five, seven-hundred.
Mm-hmm.
It's because I keep forgetting to go to the next page, and look what the definition is. What's the definition on it, please? Last time, sorry.
It was mowing.
Yeah.
Landscaping of parks, cemeteries, and other open spaces.
And so what I noticed about that is that, like, last year it was down, but this year's it's up, and the previous year was up. What's the fluctuation on that? They just like need some extra work and reducing their costs? What's that, you know, do we know?
City Manager.
It's not too much of a roller coaster, but it's up and down. I just wondered why they have that fluctuation.
Counsel Benson, you want to handle that, please? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Predominantly that-
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Predominantly, Counselor, the cost in that area is with our landscape contractor, JLG, who does mowing. Their rates really have not changed substantially over the multiple years we've had a contract with them.
Right.
We've had some additional services that we have asked that party to do.
Okay.
That has some fluctuation in there. We also use that for weed abatement, when we spray for weeds. There's some other, other services that we have within the grounds area.
Thanks a lot for that explanation.
Other questions, comments, ideas? All right, we'll jump to Cemetery Section, which is C-84 to C-85. Right, seeing none, keep going. Solid waste collection, which is C-86 to C-87. Yes, Director Smith.
I just, we spoke about this at the Finance Committee meeting, but just for the full council, when we developed the budget, we were negotiating with Waste Management at the time, and we were looking at approximately eighteen percent increase in the rates. So that's what we did when we created the budget, is assumed an eighteen percent increase. Since then, they came back and redesigned the, the plan, and so now it's seven-point-nine percent. So when you deliberate on the budget, we've reestimated that. You can reduce that line item, which is forty-five, four-four-six, which is the curbside recycling, you can reduce that by forty thousand, if you're inclined. The offset to that, also, when we were hit with that, you may or may not be aware, but in the way the pay-per-bag rates are designed, there's a ten cents attached to each bag that's sold that goes into a separate fund within the pay-per-bag fund that is used, that can be used, we've never used it, but can be used. The intent to that was to help with recycling costs. You know, if we saw big escalations in recycling, you could dip into that to avoid the impact on the budget. So we've used an estimate of eighty-two thousand dollars in revenue to offset the increase in that line item. You may or may not, you could just leave it alone, and we could continue to do that, and you would create forty thousand dollars available under the tax cap, or if you amend the revenue, it becomes tax rate, tax cap neutral. So it's kind of up to what the council would like to do with that. So those two options are available. And when we get to the pay-per-bag fund, which is the solid waste fund, that can also be reduced by forty thousand, if you're inclined to do that. And that fund is no bearing on the tax cap or the tax rate, it's a self-supporting fund right now.
I saw some questioning faces in the council. Can you re-explain the potential proposal related to the tax cap, please? And City Manager, go ahead.
Just to, if people haven't looked at the agenda yet, there's, the Contract for Waste Management will be before you, so that hasn't passed yet, so we're, we're kind of assuming it's going to pass at seven-point-nine percent.
Right. Go ahead, Counsel Goodman.
Well, same goal, but I think what I'm hearing is, we have a budget, there's a significant increase in the curbside recycling line from two-hundred-and-forty thousand to three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars, and what I'm hearing is that we can elect to use forty thousand dollars of fund proceeds to reduce that, that three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars with, you know, essentially cash in a separate- with, you know, essentially cash in a separate account that is accumulated through the pay-as-you-throw system. Is that right?
Essentially, yeah. So we estimated using, there's, there's a little over a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in this fund. We estimated using eighty-two thousand of that to, to avoid that impact on the budget and the tax cap. You can leave that alone if you're inclined, and if you just reduce this line item by forty thousand, then you'll make, you'll, you'll have forty thousand available under the tax cap. So if you're looking to move money around the budget, that's available to you. If you decide to reduce the amount of money that you want to use from the, that fund to offset this increase, then, then it just becomes neutral. We're, we're right back to where we are, if that makes any sense.
What's the fund's name, sorry?
It's, it's the paper bag, it's the solid waste fund.
Paper bag?
Yeah, you know the blue bags?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's this, in your book, it's-
Pay per or paper?
P-A-Y-P-E-R.
Per, okay. I was like, what paper bag are we talking about? Okay, pay, the, yes, the pay-as-you-throw, the bags, yes. All right, I'm going to restate this again to make sure I understand. So there is, the pay-per-bag fund has approximately a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in it currently, and the budget that is presented assumes that we're using eighty-two thousand of that to decrease the impact to the tax rate, essentially. And we can elect to spend forty thousand more of that fund if we wanted to, which would give us forty thousand dollars to reallocate elsewhere in the budget.
Yeah, I'm just saying, don't reduce the eighty-two, just leave it alone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you, and then if you reduce the curbside recycling budget by forty thousand, it avails you forty thousand under the tax cap.
Yeah, so we have forty thousand more in the fund that we can play with if we so choose.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It would be keeping the revenues the same and decreasing the expenditures.
Just wanted to understand what was, what was being presented.
Yes, no, I think that was good, it was helpful. Other questions? Yes, city manager?
If we didn't have the eighteen percent, maybe I shouldn't say anything, if everybody had. If we didn't have the eighteen percent increase that was proposed initially, and we had seven-point-nine, we would have only used forty-two of that fund.
Right, exactly.
So we use that extra forty that we potentially no longer need, if you could reduce it, but if you want to leave it in, then you, instead of eleven dollars to play with, not to play with, but, you know, to, to increase the budget as proposed, you'd have forty thousand and eleven dollars.
Forty thousand and eleven.
I have big plans for the eleven dollars.
Counsel Gibson?
I don't know if you, you have any answer for this, but I'm just curious. They originally proposed an eighteen-point-nine percent increase, and somehow it ends up going down to just over seven percent.
Well, it was eighteen percent for the first year, and then it was a lower percentage over subsequent years of like five-point-five percent or something like that.
Yeah, five percent over there.
Yeah. And now, they just spread out that eighteen to make it level funded, they've increased level across the seven years.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel Parity Katanzaro?
On the same topic. So the line item three-thirty-four thousand of forty, account number forty-five-four-four-six that we're talking about, curbside recycling, we'd assumed three-thirty-four thousand. I understand that includes the offset that you talked about of the eighty-two. But the reason that we could reduce that to two-ninety-four, which would be forty thousand less, is because the contract was not as much as we thought it was. It makes a lot more sense to me to take it out there and to, I mean, I wouldn't propose doing something specific with that, it's just that we don't need that in that line item, and we likely won't, because that percentage has now been tapered over time. So to me, there's no reason to keep a line item higher, and it makes more sense to put, now I forget if that's putting money back somewhere or not, but it's, it's essentially-
I think that's what we're suggesting, yeah. So if, if you approve the waste management agreement as presented, that's exactly what we're suggesting, that's over-budgeted, so you could reduce it by forty thousand.
I don't know why we wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the other alternative was to also change the amount we're withdrawing from the pay-per-bag fund. So this is my question, is how much does the pay-per-bag fund accumulate year in and year out? Will we regenerate those funds over the course of the year to have the same amount in that fund for next year? Because my fear is, is, slight fear, I really think this, again, is a great idea, to save us forty thousand on our, the expenditure side. But my question is, is if we're tapping into that fund more than it will get refilled, are we going to run into a budget struggle next year when all of a sudden that cost becomes more realized? Does that make sense?
The answer is, yeah, but if you, if it's just, if you lose that revenue or you don't use it again, then you've got to make up eighty-two thousand, exactly. Just give me one second, I'll look, I'll give you an idea of what we're generating per year.
Want to ask a question while he's digging that up?
Sure, is it for him?
Yeah, probably, so I'll wait.
Does my question make sense to the council, what I'm saying?
Yes.
No, sorry, I missed that.
Oh, it's okay. I'll restate it while he's looking. It's essentially like, we, if we don't change the amount that we are withdrawing from the pay-per-bag fund, we're still taking out eighty-two thousand dollars from that fund, which had, I can't remember what it was in it. And so then, my question was, will we then feel that next year, and does that fund, or, or, excuse me, does that fund regenerate every year the amount we're going to withdraw? City manager, you have thoughts?
Was there a question there? I'm sorry.
It was for, yeah, it was a restatement of my question.
What I was going to say is, I'm sure some of you haven't read the packet for Monday. So in the third year of the seven-year agreement, we go from a curbside bag program to the automated carts. And unless we come up with some sort of funding mechanism, all the, the money for the pay-per-bag is going to slide over to the general fund, and part of it being recycling, some of this money that's being put aside might alleviate that seven-hundred-thousand dollar increase, I think was the estimate, roughly, seven-hundred-dollar increase into the general fund, in year, year number three.
What are the, the carts?
Like Rochester, when you drive through, those big, those big toders, some people call them toders, carts.
Gotcha, gotcha.
One will be for MSW, which is your garbage, your municipal solid waste, the other one will be recycling.
Okay.
We generate, on average, we're about, not quite, but almost thirty thousand a year for that ten cents.
So it's almost essentially, in the next year, we'll refill what we tapped into.
Right.
Okay, that makes me feel more comfortable. Okay, thank you. Any questions about this? Yes, you had one, sorry.
Yeah, and I think the manager just booked this, but I'm, I have not read the packet with the new contract in it. So the, the number that we have here, the three-thirty-four, reflects the contract that is before us, or it does not? It does not, okay. And so the contract that is before us is less than this, so we know, to Counsel Parity Katanzaro's point, because she was paying attention and I was not, that this number is higher than it needs to be. Okay. So I would agree with Counselor Parity Katanzaro that this number is low-hanging fruit to reduce and give us a little wiggle room elsewhere in the budget.
Okay, other, does everyone feel good about this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Until Monday, where it comes up again.
Crystal clear, good. Sure. All right, good, we will move on, unless there's other questions on this section. Okay, all right, we'll jump to other expenses, which is transfer from debt services, C eighty-eight and C eighty-nine. Questions? I had a question. This is more a philosophy thing than anything, so I apologize in advance. Is there any value or ability to utilize our healthy fund balance to pay off some of our debt? And that would be, I would think, probably our first thing that soon to come up would be the downtown improvement section. So these line items encompass four-ninety, excuse me, four-nine-seven-three-seven and four-nine-seven-three-eight. Our total principal on that debt is four-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five, with an interest of twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty. And our final payment is fiscal year twenty-eight-twenty-nine. So my theory is, my hope is, that if we pay this off with our healthy fund balance, our savings account, then we don't have this item in our budget for the foreseeable next couple of years, couple of budgets, right? One, can we do it? No, okay, never mind, that, that answers that, we can't do it, not a thing.
I do have a question on that, though, if you can.
Sure, go ahead.
We tend to get to the end of these, and we roll over, am I right? We tend to get to the end of some of these loans, and then we decide we're going to roll it over, and we're going to go into another area.
Well, we don't, we don't roll the loan over.
I don't mean that, that, I'm sorry.
What, what we attempt to do is, if there's other outstanding projects-
Right.
That gives you an opportunity to minimize, minimize the impact on your budget.
Thank you.
When it gets paid off, then that project fills in.
Thank you, that's what I meant. That'll never end, correct? It'll never end, because you're going to always have projects.
Yeah, it only ends if you just don't do any projects.
Right.
You just don't fix anything.
Right, so I don't foresee ever an end, and I keep seeing the interest rate go up, so we're in debt forever, thank you.
That's my hope.
I don't know about that. They, recently they have, but historically, they've been really low interest rates, and, and we do issue tax-exempt bonds, which keeps it low. So I, it, it hasn't been like an ever-increasing market. It has been recently because of inflation, but I don't know that that's the case. It's historically been extremely low in terms of interest rates.
Thanks, Scott, thank you very much.
That's a good one. Just a quick follow-up on the interest. Is, when we issue a bond, is, is that a floating rate, or is it locked for the life of the bond?
It's, it's locked in, so what they do is, you actually go out to bid, and you have, the financial institutions will bid on it, and then it ends up being a locked rate.
Okay, so we're, so most of the debt that we have now was probably at very historically low interest rates, given where the interest rate environment was over the last ten, fifteen years.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Great, thank you, I was just hoping to save us a little money, pay our, pay our debt with our healthy fund balance.
Sorry, one more.
Yeah, I'm going to actually turn to Counsel Barry, she did have her hand as well, go ahead, Counsel.
I was just, I think I had asked this of you, and I think you gave me an answer, but I was just curious if you could maybe explain why the fund balance couldn't be used in that way, because there's criteria, if I remember correctly, correct?
Well, yeah, but you, we can't, you can't prepay your debt, it's not allowed.
Right, but like, if Mayor Gerting was looking to use the fund balance in another way, is there a specific criteria around the fund balance? Sorry, it's not specifically to these items? I think it was where he was going with the question, I think? If that's not where you were going, then dismiss.
No, I mean, my question was, like, what ways can we pay one-time things, like something, like a debt or something, to, and utilize a healthy fund balance that we have to kind of check some things off our list, or get some things off our expenditure side? And this seemed like a logical option, if the option existed, but it sadly doesn't, so. Counsel Goodwin?
Well, my, my, thank you, my, my thoughts were kind of similar, actually, in, in thinking about the fund balance, certainly in a, in a tight budget year like this, we're thinking about ways to sort of offset the tax rate where we can by investing in certain items with the fund. But, you know, speaking earlier to the economic development piece, a strategy for, if the city were ever to get more aggressive about stimulating redevelopment in the downtown and buying vacant properties like the BP, or a number of other ones I could cite, that, that is typically done through the fund, right? So that, you know, just putting that out there as a seed.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And again, typically, if we ever need supplemental appropriations for items that come out outside of our budget season, we utilize the fund to do some of those. Other questions about this, about transfer of debt services? You live over there? I know, me too. All right, seeing none, we'll continue, capital leases, which is C ninety and C ninety-one.
You got a question?
Question?
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Gibson.
Okay. Along a similar vein, can we prepay leases, or are they locked?
I'm not fully sure, but I think, yeah, I think you could prepay your leases.
Okay, thank you.
Love to know that, thank you. Other questions? Okay, continuing on, we will go to transfer to other capital funds, C ninety-two and C ninety-three. Okay, Counsel Goodwin, go ahead.
Just a quick one, the super fund landfill monitoring, is there any shared expense with Eclera or GE with this? I know that they were one of the originators of the contamination there, so.
City manager?
Yeah, it's on page- Oh, sorry, the mic was off. It's on page C ninety-three. We pay, GE pays forty-nine-point-five percent, we pay fifty-point-five.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, Counsel Gibson?
Yeah, I don't remember the history on the super fund, but weren't there other parties besides GE?
City manager?
Yeah, principal responsible parties, PRPs, as often referred to, there were, I saw it one time, I can't remember, there were probably fifty contributors, maybe even more, they were negotiated out, and we now have just two principal responsible parties, PRPs.
Thank you. Other questions? All righty, moving on. Contingency, C ninety-four, C ninety-five. Yes, Counsel Gibson?
I know the contingencies add a cover surprises. Is it, would it be considered bad policy to drop that for this year?
City manager?
Well, I wouldn't, I'm not recommending it, it used to be even higher, so it's entirely up to the council, but-
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, we have the reserve fund, not that I'm in favor, but I'm just looking for any ways we can skin the tax rate.
Just a reminder, too, we do have those police positions, that if they were to be hired, I would assume this may be a location that we would draw from to help offset the costs. Others, I mean, there's things like that, that this may get utilized for. I love the idea, I think, I think you're on the right track, but it's just worth highlighting that as well. I'm just writing a note, sorry, everybody. All right, other questions, Counsel Parity Katanzaro?
Yes, thanks. Procedurally, I know that we typically have to approve various, most expenditures, and there are some things, well, I guess my question is, what can be used out of contingency that would help streamline having to bring things from council? Like, is the reason that we have it under contingency that it's easier to get at than, say, taking it out of a fund?
Well, on page C ninety-five, some of the uses include wages for non-union and collective bargaining agreements that will be negotiated on. We are, we do have, we have one more year for all the unions, but non-union is up to the council. And just unforeseen emergencies and expenses, and it's dealt with under the transfer ordinance that we often do in June, and it's either between the departments or from contingency to cover any over-expenditures in various departments' budgets. And sometimes, there might be something that's unfunded, and we'll, council will approve it, or finance committee will approve it, and it's earmarked to come out of, out of this particular line. particular line.
Right, I guess my question is, does this allow for the city manager or department heads to more easily access those funds, or everything still has to come through council
To go from department, to, to transfer from department to department, it needs to go in front of council. However, I can transfer money or authorize transfer of money within departments from line to line.
So for the contingency, what department is that considered under?
That would be either myself or the council or the finance committee.
Would have to go through us in order to utilize contingency, I think is the question?
I don't believe so. I have spending authority up to 25, finances, spending authority up to about 50.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
We could earmark either myself or the, the council, finance committee could earmark from here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, continuing, capital outlay, we got C96 and C97.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
49082, down payment on a vehicle lease, $20,000. I look on the definition page, it says down payment towards vehicle or equipment lease. What, which ones? What is, what is this, what is this for?
It's right below, so next year what's slated would be one police cruiser.
Okay.
And the public works plow truck 311.
I didn't see that, thank you.
You're welcome.
These are purchases we've yet to officially approve, correct?
That's correct, they haven't been purchased yet, and it'll take action of council to actually do that, but it's based on our annual equipment leasing that we do.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilor Goodwin?
Master plan, line 49162. There was $25,000 last year, there's zero proposed this year. I believe we had talked about last year, either during the CIP or the budget, you know, not having the appetite to fund a full master plan update in one fell swoop, because it's, you know, roughly $200,000 to do that. But taking incremental approach and investing in a sort of chapter-by-chapter update, and I know we've been aggressive about pursuing grant money to aid us in that effort, but I think we should also be contributing as part of the city. It goes to my, you know, the conversation we're having earlier about economic development. This is our guiding growth document and how the community wants to see growth happen here. It has, Summersworth has evolved tremendously since the last master plan, our opportunities are different, our community has different challenges, and I think it's really important that we have an up-to-date master plan to guide the economic activity that is happening around us. And I also think it's a good investment, given that, you know, that update will happen under the new manager, so it's an opportunity for that manager to start engaging in, you know, visioning and future process planning and all that stuff. So I would strongly recommend that we fund some amount this year to a master plan update. I would just say $25,000, which was what we did last year, in light of the $40,000 that we are likely going to bank on recycling, I think that could be a source, just putting that out there.
Thank you. Council Gibson?
I apologize for not being up to date on this, but how much is left to do on the master plan?
Fair question. Department head, or city manager?
Yeah, if Director Mears could tackle that question, I appreciate it, Michelle.
Good morning, almost afternoon.
Or afternoon.
Afternoon. So I just got a quote from Stratford Regional Planning Commission to do the vision in the transportation chapter. We have completed the housing chapter, the natural resources and land use chapter. So after the vision in transportation, it would be economic development proposed, and then buildings and facilities.
And $25,000 per chapter, or was it just for this?
That's what we had budgeted, $25,000 per year.
I meant, what does $25,000 buy us?
A chapter.
A chapter, that's what we wanted.
Refresh my memory, are we under contract now with this, our PC for master plan chapter?
We, I have a contract.
Have we spent the 25? Have we spent the 25 yet?
No, we have not, but I have a contract.
It's in this year's budget.
Yes.
We haven't spent it yet.
But we're working on it.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, Council Barry?
Actually, if you want to stay. Since we haven't spent this, this year's budget, from what you just said, and you got a quote, would it be okay not to put it in this current year's and wait for next year? Because it sounds like it takes a little bit of time to get this going. I'm just trying to figure out, like, scale-wise, like, do we feel like we could do more than what we're already doing, or would that be more like overpowering us on what we're currently doing around the master plan? Did that make sense? I'm sorry, I felt like I kind of went in a circle there.
I would restate it just in case, I was, I, I don't know if I fully understood.
Okay, so I, basically, we haven't spent the 25, we've already allocated, you are getting quotes and things, we haven't written those chapters yet. So I'm just worried about if we want to more, do more chapters, is that going to bog us down, putting more in the budget towards more chapters at this moment?
So that would be anticipated probably to start next spring, if, if you guys were to fund that. I think it could be pushed out. We are also working on a historical and cultural resources master plan chapter that we got grant funding for. That needs to go out to bid, so.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking, I just don't want to put money in and then bog down, that's why, I'm kind of curious.
Do you plan to expend the $25,000 before this year's budget concludes?
Hopefully. I, I need to update the city manager about the process.
That's fair, understood, just curious. Other questions? Yes, Council Perry, Council Zara?
I think if I understand you correctly, you're asking, like, do we have the capacity, if we funded 25 for next spring, would you have the capacity to take it on then, or would?
Yes, we would have the capacity to take it on then, because the other chapters would be wrapping up.
Right, right, okay, thanks.
Other questions? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And any more related to C96 or C97? Okay, we'll continue, county and schools. I mean, it's fun to look at these, but we have no say over really any of these numbers, unfortunately. So I'm going to kind of quickly just go by C98, C99, C100, which brings us to our enterprise fund section. Does anyone need a break, by the way? Just, are everyone doing okay? Yeah, we're not far, I just figured I'd ask.
Perfect.
All right, let's keep going. C101, which includes, it's kind of like a overview of the section, estimated revenue for the enterprise fund, so we're going to jump to C102, C103, C104, C105, which is all wastewater. Any questions, comments, ideas? All righty, okay, we'll keep going. Brings us to C106, C107, C108, C10, oh, wait, sorry, those, let me just verify those were, oh, those were all included in the original, I apologize. Yeah, so now we're at C109, which is the water department, which goes C109, C110, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, up to that. So 109 to 117. Any questions, comments, ideas? Yes, Council Perry, Council Zara?
Yeah, something that I always look at is the, you know, percentage difference from previous budget, and this is probably the highest one that I've noticed today. And I think, you know, part of that is because we're looking at updating our much-needed updates to the water facilities, the waste treatment plan, nope, wastewater treatment plant, WPT, design at 512, and then a few large water main projects, but just wonder if we could speak to that very large increase, and is that something that we previously approved already?
City manager.
Yeah, Director Bobinski, you want to take that on, please?
The, thank you. The, in the, in the water fund for FY 2025, 2026, we are anticipating some capital projects. For instance, we're, we're in the early stages of design of two water main replacements that will occur in FY 26. And they show up as part of capital outlay for projects. The, in the, in the year ahead, we'll also be embarking in design engineering for upgrades to the water treatment plant off Wells Street for replacing obsolescence and upgrading the plant to meet current needs and future. So that's on the water side. On the sewer side, wastewater treatment plant, where we will be embarking, subject to approval of the budget, what we call phase two of the improvements of the wastewater treatment plant. And that's really capital improvement, it's replacing older equipment and meeting some current needs. And so that shows up in FY 26, not only engineering, but final engineering, but then beginning construction. It'll probably be about a 18-month project, I anticipate.
Great.
Yeah.
I don't know if that, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and I, I also just wanted, you know, folks to know, this is part of our meeting the needs of the growing community, the, the additional housing and things like that, so that we're well positioned.
Long-term.
Thank you.
Council Gibson?
Okay, just to clarify for the public, the wastewater fund and sewage fund, however you want to say it, those are independent of the general budget.
They are.
They are paid for based on the rates being charged.
And use, and water use, yes, water and wastewater use.
Thank you. Important clarification, just so folks know that any change to this will not impact the tax rate. Other questions, comments about this section? Thank you. All right, brings us to C18, or excuse me, C118 and C119, which is our solid waste disposal. Questions, comments, concerns? All right, brings us to our cable fund, which is C120 and 121. Again, just a quick question for those at home, how much is the cable fund currently set at, if you don't mind? Or the amount, I should say, that's in it?
We currently have about $185,000 in there. We, we get between $25,000, $30,000 a quarter from the franchise fee, and there will be coming forward a couple proposals to use some of that money for a couple of projects here shortly.
Great. Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, great. Lastly, it brings us to the schools. Again, we are not going to go through this line by line, only because we have no say line by line, but we do have say over the final amount. And with that in mind, I do want to hear ideas or questions or comments related to that, because it will be debated before council. Council Perry, Council Zara?
Yes, I know that one of the ideas on the table is to potentially split a social worker with the school. Where does that appear in the budget, or does it not appear in there yet?
Good question. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
I don't recall hearing about it. First, I know of it, know of it.
Okay, then I guess I'm raising the issue, because it will be raised when the budget is presented, that that's one of the creative ways that they're hoping to keep the budget down, and that's, you know.
Can I just say?
Hold on one second, please let her finish her thought.
Sorry, that's something that we have been talking about on the school board, and it's part of that. Sorry, I've lost my train of thought.
I apologize.
I just want to say that we have no final, we have no say on line item, I don't know why we'd even discuss it. They have all the say, the school board has all the power, we just give them the money and they do what they need to do with it, and I understand that she has a concern about the social worker, but we have no say. They could say they're going to take and fund a social worker and then not even fund it, so I don't understand what we're talking about.
Certainly true. I think, and I'll, I'll let you add more.
And I appreciate that, Your Honor.
I think that because we received a tiered plan of the use of any additional funding, I think the question was, was brought up to identify whether addition, like, whether the cuts that we make, if we fund at the tax cap amount, would have implications on the city side, which is, do we have that allocated in the city side? Am I incorrect in that assumption?
Yes, so I think that's where I was going, if I could finish, that, I'm not talking about the school board budget at all, I'm talking about the proposal to add into the city side budget, which we do have line item authority, part of that position.
Thank you.
I thought you were talking about school, I'm sorry.
But again, we can generally have a conversation about our feelings about the amount of the school budget. We can discuss our willingness to increase it, decrease it, keep it at what it's at, and I am certainly interested in what folks have to say about that. Council Gibson?
I spent 14 years on the school board, so I've been on that side of the table, as have several others here. The decreasing enrollment, the loss of Rollinsford's contribution to the SAU, and yet I saw no reflection of that whatsoever in any part of the school budget, especially the SAU, and, which makes me wonder how realistic is the school department being in their budgeting The other side of that being, I understand the needs of the school, but at the same time, you have a substantial number of people in this community who, besides the general expenses of paying their bills day to day, are being asked to, as things stand now, take another major hit. And some in particular are getting clobbered. Average increase for anybody in a modular home unit is almost 100%. So before people start talking about adding to the budget, we need to really seriously look at how this all affects our taxpayers, particularly retired people or people on fixed incomes. And adding anything to the school budget is going to be a hard sell to the people that voted for me. I've talked to people that are my neighbors, and they're not in favor. So I guess I have to keep that in mind when I'm looking at the school budget.
Thank you. Other comments, ideas, thoughts? Yes, Council Barry?
More of a question for me, because again, this is my first year. So I understand we only approve the dollar amount we give at the end of the day, but I did have some questions that came up based on what they presented. When do we get the option to ask some of those specific questions, if, at all? It is Monday?
I would say that if you have any questions related to the school side, it's probably best answered by the superintendent, and you could schedule a meeting to meet with him. We did have that workshop with the school.
And I, I do feel that I was not present during that one, but.
Okay, that would have been probably the ideal time for certain questions to be raised. I do encourage you, if you do have questions about it, to reach out to the superintendent, I'm sure he would be more than happy to answer them. But I imagine he will be here on Monday. Well, he will be, he'll be presenting, so yeah, he will be here on Monday. And so if you wanted to discuss those with him, it kind of is jumping to something I did want to bring up before we left, which is, is my intention that we, again, like normal, break up the school side and the city side of the budgets and work on them a piece at a time? And I'm hoping that we can start with the city side, so it may not be that we get to. So it may not be that we get to the school side on our Monday meeting. I'd like to focus Monday's meeting on the city side. I think we came up with some really good possible proposals and I'm not expecting the city side is done Monday. If it's not, we have two other meetings after that. But I think, essentially, I think right now the city side is something we have more control over, so let's see what we end up with that and then end with the school side, if that makes sense. Council Goodwin, you had a hand?
And that, you know, maybe, this is obviously, to your point, best directed at, at staff at the school. But, you know, I guess my question is, we're looking at the, the tiered reductions that they present as to give us a flavor of the implications for funding, you know, different types of, or levels of funding. And the third tier budget reductions, you know, get into quite a few, you know, positions being cut. And I guess I, I want to better understand from the school, like, this is, this is just bullets. You know, I have no idea what a, cutting a middle school teacher does or what cutting a high school teaching position does in terms of class size, in terms of expected performance, you know. I don't understand the implications of this, it sounds bad. I get that, you know, you know, we want to maintain a high-quality education, but I have no idea to judge and how this, how these cuts would impact the quality of the education we're providing because it's just bullets on a page. So, and to, you know, points that have been made prior, we know that our student population over time has declined. It makes sense that our, you know, our teacher count and some, to some extent, the staff, supporting staff count should decline quasi-proportionally with that. I get that it's not going to be a one-for-one, but, you know, we just don't, we don't have that insight with what's been presented and so definitely want, you know, have that conversation.
Yeah, I think more than, again, superintendent's made it clear, he's more than willing to talk with us. And again, when we get to the school side of the budget at our council meetings, you're more than welcome to suspend rules and invite, as a member of the public, to come talk, I think that's more than fine. Council Vincent?
One quick comment. It seems to be a one-way street. If I can only give you the bottom line, I, I have such heartburn over this, I can only say, have say over the bottom line, but they have no problems telling us what they have to cut. I don't know, it sounds like a one-way street to me, sorry.
Other questions, comments, concerns about this section, ideas, anything? All right, so that kind of concludes our workshop. Again, as I said, on Monday's meeting, we'll have our public hearing for the budget. I anticipate a number of folks coming, we'll have a presentation before that from city manager and superintendent. And I would encourage the council to consider opening up the city side of the budget first and working on that. As a reminder to folks, as a school employee, when we do discuss the school side and amendments are made and such, I will recuse myself and council with them will step in for that section. Like before, like last year, I will plan to have a spreadsheet that I will project while we go through each sec, each part and make changes. And hopefully the spreadsheet like last year will reflect changes to tax rate and amounts that we're drawing and all those things. I'm sure you all remember it from last year. I felt like feedback I received was that having that was helpful, so I plan to do that again and I'll present from the podium rather than here during that time. Questions for me about process for Monday before we adjourn? Okay, cool, workshop over, thank you.